Listen. (laugh) Excuse me. Please stand for the flag salute.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who the hell's in here?
Are you reading the sunshine?
No, roll call goes first, doesn't it?
Mr. Gallantino?
Here.
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets.
Your motion to approve the minutes of April 24th, 2014?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. To your motion for the approval of resolutions and decisions amended number 13, 2014, Robert Nustader, number 22, 2014, Jason Newman, number 23, 2014, Ed Wahlberg, number 24, 2014, Cassandra Banco, number 25, 2014, Stephen Baglevo, number 25, 2014, Stephen Brown.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes one, nothing.
You have to amend the resolution. You have to do an amended resolution.
Yeah, amended.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Ridge?
Who?
I think the synographer has a question. Go ahead.
Nobody opposed.
Oh, yes.
You said one.
No, only one person answered in the positive and nobody answered in the negative. Mainland General Contracting and Restoration Inc., 9 South Granville Avenue, Block 108.02, Lot 19, in the CBD district to grant a site plan approval for land area under 10,000 feet and C variances for parking, size of storage sheds, and possibly others, and D variances for office use. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin? Right, because it's a D variance, Mr. Gallantino, Mr. Collins, and you're here, Brendan won't be accusing themselves. Roger Rubin?
I do. The subject property is the Barrels Restaurant Building, parking lot and ground sitting on a lot of 84 feet wide on both Granville and Gladstone Avenues and 80 feet deep totaling 6,720 square feet. Previously, the board heard a request for a group of single-family houses on this parcel, which was denied. This application per the submitted plans of Peter Weiss Architect and Arthur W. Yuponzio Surveyors, Planners, and Engineers proposes the construction of a three-story structure with three commercial units on the ground floor and three residential units above. The building would be oriented toward Granville Avenue with double-hung parking, 10 spaces off Gladstone Avenue, as well as a grade-level accessory structure for storage and trash. Handicap access is built into the commercial units, which are each about 950 square feet. The three residences are each bi-level with four bedrooms each, a den at the lower level, and decks at both levels on Granville Building, on Granville. Building height is 33 feet 6 inches from grade as permitted. Action required: Site plan, D or use variance, because the CBD permits retail space only at the ground level and the applicant wishes the option of renting or selling the commercial properties for office usage in addition to possible retail, commercial, or service usage. C variances are required for the following: Size of accessory structure. The structure provided is 230 square feet per the following section. 250 square feet is required, a shortfall which was pointed out to me by Mr. Waszleski this afternoon, is a little larger than de minimis because most probably the trash area portion of it is not included, so it's, you'll give us the calculation when you testify as to what's not the trash area, and that would be the difference between that and 250 square feet. C variance also for parking. The residential requirement is three spaces per each four-bedroom unit or nine spaces. The commercial requires one space per 200 square feet for retail, and there's a type of retail or medical and real estate office, which is 14 spaces. If general business, that is not re, not medical and not real estate, it's one space per 300 square feet or 10 spaces. The project proposes 10 spaces in all, so there's a deficiency of between 10 and 13 spaces. Comments? Revised plans should contain all non-wavable conditions of the city engineer letter which is attached. Regarding the board's site plan decision, it should consider public safety for pedestrians, and auto traffic, the efficiency of the site arrangement, how the trash will be maintained and disposed, and site landscaping. While there is no landscaping requirement in this case and no landscape variance, it is still within the purview of the board to determine if additional landscape areas or plantings are a desirable attribute in this particular location. As to the use variance, the side street location is a consideration where visibility is limited for retail walk-in customers, and there are several other offices on the street already, including Rosenkranz, Tozy, the Wells Fargo Bank, and others. The parking arrangement is a bit problematic with cars backing out onto a narrow yet heavily transverse street, and there will be some jockeying because of the tandem arrangement. Also, about three curbside spaces will be lost on Gladstone, as well as about 15 feet of a 30-foot truck unloading zone used by castles and other stores. On the other hand, two spaces will be picked up on Granville Avenue at the location of the former Barrels driveway entrance. Five, the height profile of the proposed structure on Granville, while conforming to ordinance, may be a consideration in terms of relationship to existing buildings across the street and on the same side. And finally, the parking space shortfall needs to be addressed by the applicant as to why it will not be a burden on the mixed-use neighborhood, and the board member's knowledge of that neighborhood and its parking and movement patterns is relevant to their decision-making. If approved, the above condition as to city engineer should be imposed, as well as any others the board feels are relevant. This may also be a case if the board wishes where the vote could be separated, such as the site plan and C variances on one vote and the D variance on another.
Evening. Brian Callahan of the law firm Callahan, Thompson, Thompson, on behalf of the applicants. This is for the property known as 9 South Granville Avenue, Block 108.02, Lot 19. Just for the record, all jurisdictional requirements have been met. Just a quick briefing on Roger's report. We're here tonight for a use variance, parking variance, and storage variance. The use variance, as Roger said, is, is kind of a neat variance in the sense of we're in a commercial business district, yet office space at the ground level isn't permitted, but retail space at the ground level is permitted. The clients would like to have the ability, since we're on a side street, in the marketing of the, of the units, to have that ability to say, okay, if someone wanted to come in and open up a one- or two-person office, that they would have that ability to do it versus a retail on a side street. The parking, once again, requires a variance, as Rogers indicated, and the size of the storage sheds require a variance. Knowing that you have a long agenda, we have Mr. Weiss here and Mr. Barnhart, so Mr. Bergman, why don't we have them sworn in? I'll then give you a list of exhibits, and then we can get, go ahead and proceed. Jackie?
Please state your name for the record.
John Barnhart. Peter?
State your name for the record.
Peter Weiss. Stand, we have five exhibits. A1 is an existing survey. A2 is the denial from the last time we were here for the minor subdivision with the two residential dwellings. A3 is the site development for this application. A4 is an aerial photograph, and A5 are the elevations and floor plans of Mr. Weiss. So without further ado, let me call Mr. Barnhart and...
Thank you.
John, why don't you familiarize him with the existing?
Okay. The exhibit that I'm going to speak from first was labeled Exhibit A1. It's a, it's the property survey that was submitted with the application. I'm sure everybody's very familiar with the property, but this is the site of the existing Barrels Restaurant. It is a parcel of land that has a frontage on both Granville and Gladstone Avenue. The property's width is 84 feet and its depth is 80 feet. Currently sitting on the, on the property in the gray shaded area that you see here is a one-story structure, and then there are, adjacent to that, there are six parking spaces which are accessed by entrance from Granville and exit onto Gladstone Avenue. The existing building footprint is 3,522 square feet, and I'm sure everybody's familiar, but it operates as a sit-down restaurant together with a takeout portion of the, of the restaurant, and also, I believe, delivery service from that restaurant. We were here a number of months ago, and I, pretty much everybody was here, I'm sure, for an application for a two-lot, single-family residential detached subdivision. We went through a long evening, and I thought we put on some great testimony and supported the application, but the board at that time made a determination that, that creating just residential uses, these two residential uses in your central business district, was not the best interest of the community, and you denied that application that evening. Everybody's familiar from, from the prior case with the surrounding land uses being mostly residential on either side, the commercial actually heads toward the avenue, but the, so the plan that I had before you, I just wanted to just refresh everybody's memory of what, of what the prior application was, of being two single-family detached homes. Exhibit A3 is the, is a rendered version of the site plan that you have in your application package, and the proposal before you this evening is to create a development that we think is largely in conformance with your land use ordinance. It's in, we believe it meets the intent and purpose of the CBD zone, but it does still require some deviation, some variances with regard to the use that we propose at the ground floor, together with parking, and then one accessory structure variance.
Let's, let's start with the basic use variance.
Okay.
And we're asking for the ability of office space in addition to retail space at the ground.
Correct.
And that's not a permitted use in the...
That's correct.
It is only permitted as an accessory.
Correct.
Talk a little bit about positive criteria.
Certainly. In order to establish the positive criteria, we have to put forth special reasons in accordance with the municipal land use law requirements to satisfy the positive criteria and why this project is appropriate for this location. And in this specific case, we believe that we have four special reasons that would apply to this application, and I'm going to start with, with the idea that this application promotes the general welfare. The reason that I believe I can say that is because this site is particularly well-suited for the use that we propose at that ground floor. Your ordinance permits commercial at the ground floor, being retail and a litany of other commercial type of uses. The only thing it does not permit at this location is office space. We are proposing as an option to allow tenants or use of that, of that ground floor as office space. The reason that we believe that this site is particularly well-suited as office space really kind of goes back to my initial justification for the residential, and that is, this is a, this is, this is off the beaten path a little bit. This is on a side street. This is an area where it is a congested area. The streets are not wide like your main arteries through town. They're not like Vetner or Atlantic Avenue. They are standard 50-foot wide streets, so although, so because it is, is in the CBD zone, it really lends itself to a less intense type of commercial use. Office space is exactly that, and in fact, if you look at, at land use ordinances, Margate's ordinance being one of them, and nearly all land use ordinances that we work with, you can, you, if you look to the parking criteria, you'll see that all land use ordinances recognize office space as a less intense type of use because the parking criteria is relaxed. As an example, the Margate ordinance requires 200 square feet for retail, but it requires 300 square feet for office space in, for, from a parking standard. Other offshore communities or mainland communities actually take the office standard up to 400 square feet per space. So I just wanted to explain, or go through that because we believe that allowing office at this location, because it's a slightly less intense use, is particularly well-suited for this site because of its physical position within the CBD zone. It is not on Vetner Avenue. It is not on Atlantic Avenue. It's not in your heavy commercial area. It is essentially mid-block, and it is opposite, as you know from, from our prior case, it is opposite residential land uses on either side of Gladstone and Granville Avenue and going all the way toward Atlantic Avenue, except for the bank, is all, again, residential uses. So we believe that allowing, that allowing that less intense commercial use on this site is a very, very appropriate land use for this and why this site is very particularly well-suited for, for office space. Secondarily, we believe that this application promotes the free flow of traffic. While we are asking for a deviation with regard to the number of parking spaces that we're requesting, you'll hear me go through that when we talk about the C variances, and this application is right in keeping, and actually, if it, if, if office space ends up being the end user, is actually less of a burden on parking than the existing condition is. This site, as Mr. Rubin's report points out, this site frees up all of Granville Avenue, which as we know right now is the entrance to the Barrels parking facility. It is also an area that I'm sure we've all seen, does tend to be double-parked a number of times, people running in to get their food, or a delivery person stopping quickly to go in and out, so it'll, it'll dramatically, we believe, improve the traffic flow and increase some on-street parking on Granville Avenue. In keeping with that as well, the Gladstone Avenue portion, if you, if you're familiar with, with the striping out in front of this site, the Gladstone Avenue portion, while we do, or we are proposing two driveways, we are not losing any off-street parking, I don't believe, because of the position, this last off-street parking is just clear of our proposed driveway. There is some loading area loss on the, what I'll say is the left side along Gladstone Avenue. We are providing, we believe, adequate parking for all the residential uses, and the real deviation with regard to parking really lenses is, comes with the commercial portion of this application, and we'll, I'll discuss that at greater length when we get into the parking. So for all those reasons, we believe that the free flow of traffic, promotion of free flow of traffic is advanced with this application. The third special reason is a desirable visual environment. Mr. Weiss has created a, a building...
Maybe I misunderstood you. Did you say you meet the requirements for the residential? Did you say you?
No, I said we meet the needs, not, not necessarily the requirements. We'll get into all the numbers when I get to the Cs. No, I think, I believe we meet the needs, but not the requirements. Providing a desirable visual environment through creative design techniques. This is what your CBD zone anticipates for, for a, for a development. It, it permits commercial on the ground floor. It permits residential above. We think Mr. Weiss has done a very nice job to break up the front and create a very appealing, curbside appeal along Granville Avenue, so we believe that a, a desirable visual environment is enhanced with this application from the existing restaurant one-story facility. And then lastly, protection from flood, fire, and other natural and man-made disasters. We have a building that's been there for a great number of years. It doesn't meet any of the current flood requirements that we're aware of. Mr. Weiss has designed a building that will be flood-proof on the commercial ground floor, and then obviously the residential units, which are well above, or are above that ground floor level, will all more than meet the requirements with regard to flood. The building, I believe, will be sprinkled. The building will be fire-suppressed, and so all of those upgrades to current code standards, we believe, help to promote that special reason.
Moving on to the negative criteria, there's technically two prongs to the negative criteria.
Well, I think this is the perfect segue for the neighborhood, meaning you have a commercially-zoned piece of property, but it's kind of sandwiched between commercially-developed properties and residentially-developed properties. So we are proposing a permitted space, I'll call it, on the ground floor. The only deviation is that we want to utilize it as office instead of retail. We're proposing permitted units on the upper floors, and we aren't requesting any, there are no setback variances necessary for the building itself. So for all those reasons, we believe that there is no impairment to the intent or purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and in fact, with the mixed type of use at this mid-block coming from that heavy commercial on the avenue back to the residential on the side streets, I think it is an appropriate use for the location.
Once again, second prong, substantial.
No, I do not. I think it's, I think as I talked about when I went through the idea of it being particularly well-suited, I think it is the right use for this location. Not to say that the retail is not also viable at this location, there's been a restaurant here for a number of years, it's been very successful, but I think the, the high intensity uses place a burden on those surrounding residential land uses, and I think that this proposal as office space is a lessening of the burden on the surrounding land uses.
Let's move into the C variances. We're technically looking for a...
Hmm?
And give a little bit...
Sure. Okay, so I'll start, I'm actually going to start with the existing condition, just to put it into perspective, because I think it's important. The existing site, as I mentioned, has a, is a building that's 3,500 square feet, little over 3,500 square feet. I believe a prior approval permitted 20 seats. If you calculate your land use ordinance at one space for every five, or, one space for every five seats, that is a requirement of six parking spaces. The balance of the building has a takeout area, which we actually had measured today at approximately 300 square feet. If you utilize your parking criteria for takeout, that creates a parking demand of 12 spaces. So the existing parking demand on the site is, by our calculation, is 18 parking spaces. The existing available parking on the site is six parking spaces, so we have an existing deficiency of 12 parking spaces. When you look at our proposal, what we propose is a smaller building footprint. It's, it's approximately, approximately seven, almost 700 square foot smaller. Our building footprint on the ground floor commercial is 2,886 square feet. If you calculate that using, and I'm going to be more conservative, meaning I'm going to use the higher number, assuming that we're going to, we're going to place retail in that space. Your ordinance requires one space for every 200 square feet. By that calculation, it would be 14, 14 and 1/2, around at the 15 spaces. Your residential, because of the, because of the building type, the residential site improvement standards push these four-bedroom units to three spaces per unit, so that would require nine spaces for each of the three. When you add that to the commercial space that I mentioned that I'm calculating as retail, it becomes a requirement of 24 parking spaces. Our current configuration is showing 10 parking spaces, so it's a deficiency of 14 parking spaces. Again, I go back to the existing deficiency is 12 parking spaces. So our proposal is slightly greater in deficiency than the existing condition. But the interesting fact is, if you look at what we propose and what we truly believe will be the case at this, at this location, that is, part of our use variance, we're asking for office space. Office space per your ordinance requires one space for every 300 square feet, which is just, I'm sure you're aware of this, but is actually a very, is still an intense number for office space. Many land use ordinances are actually even less than that. But if you, if you run the math utilizing that ground floor as office space, you require, we require 10 spaces for the, for the downstairs, for the, for the residential, or for the commercial. We require the same nine spaces for the residential, so what that, what that, what that then means is that we have a total requirement, I just messed up, of 19 spaces. With the 10 spaces that we propose off of Gladstone Avenue, our net deficiency with office space is nine spaces. So my point behind all this is, when you look at what you're dealing with right now, you have a 12-space deficiency. The range of the worst-case scenario retail to the best-case scenario of office takes you from a slightly higher to a slightly lower deficiency. So from a parking standpoint, we believe we're right in keeping with what's there today, but we believe that all the benefits of the balance of this project are what clearly outweigh the potential negatives of not providing the parking for, per your land use ordinance. Now, I mentioned, Chairman asked the question, do you meet the, the parking requirement for residential? Your, your land use ordinance refers, or utilizes the residential site improvement standard requirements. For these types of, of buildings, being not fee-simple detached units, you're required three parking spaces per unit. If we were to build three single-family homes separate from one another, they actually, a four-bedroom home requires two and a half spaces, which per residential site improvement standards actually rounds to two spaces. So because these three buildings are, because these three units are attached to one another, that, that means we need three spaces per unit. If we were building three houses throughout the community, we only need two spaces per unit. So that's why I made the statement that we believe we meet the needs of the building, but we don't meet the requirements. So we, this is a, this is a balancing act. We aren't providing this parking that we need for commercial, and guess what? We rarely do when we, when we create commercial applications, and frankly, it's one, it's one of the things that makes your business district exciting. There's a lot of foot traffic, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of action going on, on those Vetner Avenue and Atlantic Avenue areas. People recognize the fact that parking is at a premium, especially when they're visiting commercial operations. They walk, they park somewhere else, they make multiple stops as they walk, as they walk to and from locations. That's what, that's what's made Margate's business district great, I believe. So we think that this on-balance is clearly a positive for the community. We think it meets the intent of the central business district, and we think that the parking deviation is, in my opinion, it's definitely not, it's definitely not a greater deviation from what you're dealing with now, and in my opinion, going from a restaurant that has an arm of takeout and an arm of delivery down to three small office spaces is a dramatic decrease on the burden of the surrounding land uses. The second variance that we need are requesting...
Can I interrupt while you're still talking about parking? Just about every commercial application that has parking problems, and you know, that's the way Margate is, if there's not parking. Would you address the issue on the residential side, even though, even if it required just two, but the issue of the stacked parking backing out onto that street? It's going to be mostly stacked parking in the summertime when the traffic is horrible on that street. I mean, I see that as a problem. Address why you don't see that as a problem. I have to take my car out, so you're blocking me in.
Yeah, I mean, so...
You know what happens with parking, so just please address that.
Yeah, absolutely. Stacked parking in a residential application is, is obviously, I don't want to say the norm, but it's, it happens quite often. And the way that, the way that this is intended to function, and there is obviously a time when a car will have to move out for another car to get in, but... But the way this is intended to function is that these spaces in a line will be dedicated to individual units. So I might have Unit A, these are my spaces. You might have Unit B, they're your spaces, and so on. The balance of the spaces on the opposite side are dedicated for... are intended to be...
...give us a little better approach before... ...for each, and moves it inside the unit. Pushes the trash up against the building. Gives us one driveway with a 24-foot-wide driveway, and everybody winds up going out frontwards. So Mr. Barnhart has prepared an exhibit, Mr. Bergman, I'll call it A6, just to show it to the board. Juggle, putting some storage space inside the unit, juggling the outside so that we would not have to... We still have to jockey because they're in tandem, but still you would be jockeying on your own parking and coming...
Oh, I think that'd be valuable, and I think now's the time to do it while you're talking about that.
As Brian pointed out, after we got Roger's report, we... He had... Brian asked us to look at... to re-study the parking and come up with a scenario that potentially addresses the comments. With the idea that, obviously, the... When you go forward with a site plan, especially in an urban community, your goal is to maximize parking to the greatest extent possible, which is what that plan does. But in trying to react to some of Mr. Rubin's comments, we put this together, which is the same building. What it does is it creates a single drive in off of Gladstone Avenue. It has a handicap and two spaces, which you would... I'll say, if you would be turning to the right. And then it has three sets of parked... of stacked spaces to the left, which would be for the units. It moves the trash area against the building. And then the storage areas would actually be... acts that would be bumped into the back of the building was our... the idea, the storage areas would be bumped into the back of the building. So what it does is it eliminates the back out, but it does reduce the number of spaces by one.
Instead of 10, you're down to nine. Also...
Unfortunately, I should have brought small ones. I didn't, but I'd be happy to pass it around, Clem. Yep, absolutely.
Where would you exit on that?
I'm sorry?
Before you pass it around, would you exit out?
It would be entrance, exit. That's a two-way, 24-foot-wide driveway meeting your ordinance requirements.
All right, we'll have to see it closer. So you would still have six residential, and now you would have...
You'd be down to three, one of them being a handicap.
Okay. But the residential would still stay at six?
Would stay with six, two stacked for each one.
I think there's more concern with the residential than with the...
Okay.
John, a little bit about that, the loading zone, and also possibly picking up the addition...
Yeah, with creating a single drive, it would reduce the amount of loading zone that would have to be eliminated, as I'm sure you're aware. Wait a second. There's an existing striped area that's used as a loading zone that comes across the entirety of the barrel's building right now. With the application that was submitted, we would be... we would have to reduce all of that. With the alternative concept, we would be able to maintain, I would say, about 50% of that loading area behind our site. So it would be helpful there. And also, I haven't measured the striping... the stripe locations on the orange street parking on Gladstone, but in that alternative, I think you might pick up one additional orange street space on Gladstone, which... But I can't testify to it exactly because I don't know exactly where that one stripe is.
And the thing about that particular... Gladstone's one-way going toward Atlantic, so it's not a space to the right. The other thing that John does is reduces and eliminates the variance for the storage sheds, because they now would be incorporated into the ground floor commercial space.
Yeah, that was a question, I guess, for Roger. If that building... If that structure is up against and part of the main building, I assume it goes away as an accessory structure at that point?
But will you have the required 250 square feet of storage for the residential? Built into the stores, is that what you're...
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. So I'm... You're redesigning the storage inside the stores, reducing the size of the stores?
Slightly, yes.
Slightly, so that you end up with 250 square feet of residential storage? Pete is not agreeing.
Let's just clarify. Let me here put this up. If you can see that you have a... This is the same building overhang that's... It's the identical building that's on the submitted plan. What we've done is we've created a piece of the... A projection of the building right at this location, so the trash would go right there. It would actually be underneath of the overhang at the second level. And it would be against the building, so it would no longer appear as an accessory structure. It would actually... You wouldn't even notice it because it's going to look like it's part of the main building.
It is cubic feet, so the requirement of 250 cubic feet is...
Will be met.
Will be met with the stores.
Yes.
Questions with respect to the parking issue for Plan Number One versus Plan Number Two? I know that we're catching you a little bit off... Parking and backing out during the winter time, probably not going to have a real issue. Have everybody pull out frontwards, create a little more... Possibly create one more parking space on Gladstone. From taking a look at the C variants in the negative criteria.
I don't believe that it would. In fact, if you want to use the number nine, if you calculate the parking requirement versus the deficiency, with office space, we actually are right in conformity with the existing condition. Obviously, from a traffic standpoint, this is a more sound plan, because there is no backing out onto Gladstone Avenue. But with parking being at a premium, in general terms, in urban communities, you do everything you can do to get every parking space possible on the site, which is, you know, while we went... in response to the comments, while we went forward with this modification.
And in your opinion, from a common sense approach, the office...
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, Margate's land use ordinance proves that, just in their parking requirements.
I don't have any other questions as Barnhart. I would open it up to...
Yes, sir?
With Plan Two, you solve the Gladstone Avenue problem, which is very good. But you reduced the parking by one, am I correct?
We reduced the parking by one from the current proposal, but we argue that we actually think we're picking one up on the street that we were... that we don't currently have, because of the existing driveway coming out. It's going to be very close. I think we're going to be able to pick one up on Gladstone. So if you want to talk about a net-net, it's actually a betterment. And keep in mind, we're getting... We're freeing up Granville dramatically.
Relative to your handicap spot...
Yes.
Would you consider soliciting the city to see if you can provide that spot on Granville Avenue rather than on-site, which would free up your parking more and would also provide handicap parking for the other five offices existing on there, which have no handicap parking at the present time? They have done that on Gladstone Avenue for castles.
With regard to that, we looked at that, Clem. And to the extent that it meets ADA guidelines, all ADA... all applicable ADA guidelines, I don't think we would... we wouldn't object to it. But I don't believe, in my experience, in my recent experience working with some of the ADA requirements, if we're building a new parking area on our site, I don't believe we can get away with providing it somewhere else, not on our site.
Technically, you have to, you're correct. But since it's already been done in town...
Unfortunately, there's groups out there now that seek these issues out. I'm involved in one of them.
Only other thing, you're really intensely developing this site. If you would go to two offices instead of three offices, you would reduce the parking that you needed and increase the parking that you have. So that would considerably affect the variance you're asking for, because you're asking for a lot.
When you say "go to two offices," you mean reduce the ground floor area?
Correct. Well, if you went from three offices to two offices, you've reduced the area. No. Same-size offices. If you could move it back one car width, nine feet.
The only way you reduce the parking requirement is if you reduce the square footage of the offices.
Yeah, I think what Clem's saying is reduce the ground floor footprint.
Correct.
I mean, obviously, that can be done. I just... You know, maybe you pick up two spaces and the demand does potentially go down, but, you know, our thought was that maximizing the commercial in the CBD zone, you know, is to everybody's benefit.
Correct. Not everybody's benefit. Just the owner's benefit.
Before I interrupted you to expand on the parking, you were headed off in another direction, so you don't...
While we were starting to talk about the deviation for the storage, but with this plan, that variance is eliminated.
Okay.
So that's all we were doing.
That's why I said Plan Two eliminates the storage variance altogether. Let me call Mr. Weiss up and let him just walk you through a little bit of the design and the materials that would be used. Pete, let me give you definitely...
Well, the initial concept was that whoever's... Come forward. The concept was that if someone came in and bought a unit, it would include the ground level and the residential space above. So you basically have three units. And the idea was that somebody could potentially live upstairs and have an office or even a store downstairs. So to that extent, the units are all basically the same size. Downstairs, you have about 900 square feet, a little more net, of usable space. And that's, of course, all commercial. Upstairs, the three units are about 1,275 square feet per floor. The ground level is all living with a den in the rear. And the upper floor has four bedrooms and three bathrooms. So, you know, they're decent-sized units, comfortable units.
Material-wise...
The exterior, yeah. Exterior, we're going to stucco the ground level, because that's going to end up being either concrete or masonry anyway. Above that, we'll have vinyl siding. On the front, it'll be cedar impressions. And on the sides, it'll probably be horizontal siding. Standing seam metal roof and metal railings on the decks. The condensing units for the air conditioning and whatnot will be up on the roof, so they won't be visible from the street.
Any questions to Mr. Weiss?
Oh, I'm sorry. What?
Access for the individuals living.
Well, the entrances to the units are on the rear, along the parking side, you know, so you can't get to them from the front.
Unit B, commercial. If you eliminated that, so that you had like... kind of like a tunnel effect, you know, would that add... Could we get more parking there? You know what I'm saying? Like you would have a tunnel coming through? I just think it's way overbuilt for the area. I mean, that's my opinion. You got... You're out in 12 bedrooms. I'm not so concerned about the commercial space, but you're out in 12 bedrooms. And you're asking for a huge variance with the parking. And I just... I mean, I know that we are very amenable to granting parking variances for commercial, but in my years on the planning board for residential, you know, we really don't do that too much. So I think that if, you know, I don't know...
Mr. Richard, the other possibility would be going to a three-bedroom unit.
Well, that would help.
For each unit?
Three, three, three.
Right.
That would reduce the parking requirement.
If you're reducing your parking efficiency, I mean, by three.
Right.
So the requirement now would be a six parking spaces for the residential versus nine parking spaces for the residential.
Right.
You have six now.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. If we went to a three-bedroom unit, the requirement is six, whereas in the four-bedroom unit, the requirement is nine. So it would reduce the deficiency by three parking spaces.
Also, Mr. Barnhart, the outside.
The parking space on the curb that you would be giving up for the second plan, you would be gaining one, but that's a, that's a trucking parking space. Isn't it like a loading zone parking space?
The loading zone's on the left-hand side.
Oh, loading on his left-hand side?
Talking about on the south side.
We're actually increasing.
On Gladstone? On Gladstone.
The loading zone is here. In the plan that we had submitted, we had to cut that all the way back to the property line. With this plan, we'd be able to save about half of it. It goes to about two, about four meters. We'd be able to save about half of it. But where we're saying, we could pick up an on-street space.
I see nodding thick.
Yeah, obviously, three bedrooms is better than four.
Mr. Carroll, had you decided to amend the application at this point to three bedrooms, you just want to go through discussion now?
Because one of the reasons that we had three residential units is we're attempting to market it so that the person upstairs has the ability to have a small office downstairs.
Yeah, but you can't count on that. And I, 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 yeah.
And that's why we asked for the concept of office and retail, because retail's permitted. No use variance, just the majority of retail. Absolutely what CBD says. We thought that office was less intense than retail and also provided a less intensity coming down the street for retail on a side street. So that having an office availability for a 750-square-foot place, if a guy came down to Philadelphia and bought the unit, he could have a one-man attorney's office in there. Or a CPA could have a one-man CPA office in there as an office use for his unit.
Yeah, but then, then why don't you market it that you have to buy an office to buy a condo? Are you going to, are you going to do that?
It's being marketed that the person who lives upstairs.
Right.
Buys the condo downstairs, buys the unit. It's a one-unit big dump. Now, he can rent it out as an office, or he could rent it out as a retail, or he could keep it for himself. But it's being sold as a unit. It's only going to be a three-unit condominium, not a six-unit condominium. So it's a three-unit condominium. So the guy who buys upstairs, buys downstairs. We just wanted to get him the flexibility to use it. Because I want to come back. And he said, I just want to put my office in. Oh, I got to come back and get a use variance. I need this office downstairs for a one-man office. So that's the purpose tonight, to ask for the use variance. And we could have just said, oh, let's just try it right now for retail and see what happens.
But like I said before, it's really not the commercial, and this is my opinion, that's the issue. It's the upstairs. You know, and I definitely think that going from four bedrooms to three bedrooms would help. You know, I'd still almost like to see what would happen if we cut out that B unit. And, you know, I've seen that in a lot of buildings, not so much around here, but in Ocean City and.
A drive-thru?
Yeah.
One street to the other.
Right.
One street to the other.
But would that help, I, would that help with parking? Would that add, would that add any more parking?
Do we want your parking on Gladstone that we just got back on Granville?
Right. Right, well, that's what, yeah, so, you know.
If they stayed with the commercial and cut it down to the three-bedroom.
Right.
And then each unit, if they decided, okay, we're going to put this office in here and it holds 24 people, they've got to come back to the board. If a guy goes in there and he says, I'm an accountant, and it's just a one-man show, can we make that a contingent that they got to come back for each one of these retails? No?
That kind of defeats the purpose of what you're doing.
In an office space. Suppose a dentist moves in there, and you've got people parked there all day long that work for the dentist, four or five people plus.
Third people. Not very big.
Oh, you're only 750 square feet. By the time you put the storage in there, you've got your utility room in there, you've got your handicap bathroom in there. You've got 750 square feet.
Well, you wanted to, you, you know, I can't tell you how the board's going to vote, but we want to discuss it now openly.
We would amend the application to go to three bedrooms upstairs.
You don't want us to discuss it? I think that's wise.
I was in here when it was voted down.
Hey, Mike, we can't hear you.
I was not here when the board voted down the opportunity to be able to make that a resident, two residential units. And I don't know the thinking behind that.
The general consensus was not to lose commercial area in town, but that we were not.
But the street's so small and congested in that area, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, the rest of your board didn't agree with you, Joe.
Obviously.
My feeling is you're making the right move from, from, from my, well, you, go ahead, Clem, speak.
If you go to three bedrooms, it's got to be a genuine redesign, not one of these tricks. They've already got five bedrooms.
These are honorable men we have here.
The den is going to be the guest room in the summertime. So you can't just change the name of the one bedrooms to.
Well, they're going to be eliminating one of them. They're going to be eliminating one of them. One of the rooms will be eliminated.
But Clem's right. You can't just change the name to like a theater or screening room. No, they would eliminate a room, I would assume.
I agree.
I think that would be a wise move. My opinion.
We have, we have no other testimony. If the board has any additional questions.
Are you going to amend the application?
Yes, they did.
And that will include like redesign?
Oh, yeah.
Right?
It must.
If you do four plans.
They've amended the application to change the parking, which would add a spot on Gladstone Avenue and have no backing on the Gladstone. And they've amended the plan to eliminate a bedroom and bring back new plans. That's the new application. Any questions from the board on that?
And the variance for storage is eliminated. I just want the record to be very clear, Brian. You're asking for offices on the first floor, but you have to be perfectly honest. You're not saying that if a retail operator came in, you would turn them away. You want the opportunity to also rent or use for retail.
That's correct. We're looking for that flexibility.
Just so the board understands fully. And if a dentist comes along, or a doctor, or a real estate office, they do have, you want the opportunity to rent them. And that is, and that is, I'm saying this because there's a different parking ratio.
That's correct.
The commercial parking ratio of one per 200 also applies to medical offices and real estate offices. Just so the board fully understands, it could be different combinations.
I think that's why Mr. Barnhart. Mr. Barnhart had indicated to me, we're asking for a deviation from the one per 200 or greater. So we would not be putting in anything that required less than 200 square feet per space. So I don't know how you're, like a restaurant would not be able to go back in there because that's, even though that may be permitted in your CBD, we're looking at the two, the two criteria that we used was 200 square feet for retail space, 300 square feet for the office space. It gave us a deviation anywhere we were short from 13 to nine, and now we would be short anywhere from 10 to seven by eliminating the extra bedrooms. So that would be, that's what we're looking for. Retail or office with the 200 square feet or greater, nothing less than 200 square feet.
The board follow that?
Yep.
No restaurant.
Any, and you're done?
We're done.
Any other questions on the board? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Joe, be sworn in.
Joe Tozey. No. Joe Tozey, 7 South Granville, 8 South Gladstone, and background IO-1 and 3 on Granville Avenue as well. Now, with my hearing. My hearing aids, I had a little trouble understanding some of what was being said. Now, he needs a variance for how many parking spaces? How many get that clear? For the retail stores or the offices? 10. Okay. Now, I took the liberty of taking pictures the last three weeks. Plus, I've had an office on Granville Avenue, four different offices for the last 25 years. I took all the pictures, which I have right here, of the people start coming in at quarter to eight in the morning, and by nine o'clock, both sides of the streets are filled. And they're there from eight o'clock till five o'clock. And some of the trucks on the opposite side, they work the castles, are there to even seven, 7:30. Okay? So I don't know where, why, if you can allow this, your variance to go through. There isn't any parking. Also, I have pictures of my parking lot, which is two commercial lots, which I use as a parking lot. And the pictures show six to 10 cars. Those six to 10 cars are the people that work in the area that I rent to, because they cannot find parking on the street. So I allow them to park on my lot. Okay? Now, 25 years ago, you're not aware that when I bought the parking lot, it was chained up. Nobody could park at all. You know what I'm saying? So therefore, I have eliminated, I have opened up spaces for people to park. And they're not offering enough. So I don't see how this variance could pass. That's my first issue. My second issue is, which I have pictures of both, back in August of 2012, I put the city on notice about the trucks on Gladstone Avenue. And the chief of police did a wonderful job of doing his best to alleviate a lot of the problems. He worked with Howard. Howard now lets tractor trailers on his lot. That helps alleviate some of the problems we have on Gladstone Avenue. You're going to be taking, right behind Bowls, where they want to put their driveway, you're going to be taking two, and you have spaces. The next two spaces is a truck zone in front of my building, 8 South, which I use as an office and playroom. Now, there's my issue right there. It's going to start a problem, and I have pictures for you, so you can see that. I made four copies for you to show what happens. May I drop some copies off to you? Public one. Public one. That's my color print. I want that. Let me have that one back. That's my favorite one. Okay? As you can see. And the two spots are taken with a car in front of Bowls, which is two-hour parking. And then my two spots is a truck zone. Every day of the week, there's a tractor-trailer who takes all four spots. And when there's two cars parked there, they extend into my parking lot and block my parking lot. Okay? Now, that problem is going to come back again once that driveway is put there. One I would suggest is do away with the truck zone completely in front of my place. No trucks, sign up, no trucks whatsoever, because this is just going to happen. It already has happened. And like I say, I have that order that I sent the city back in August. I have a copy if you like it. And like I say, the chief of.
Joe, we have no, we have no jurisdiction over what, where a truck stop is or not. That's the city commission.
As you can see, what's going to happen there, that's what's going to happen. The same thing has happened in the past. And, you know, what I used to do was call police officers four and five times a day because my people couldn't get off the lot, they couldn't get on the lot. And one of the officers had the nerve to say to me one time, after I called five times, that he didn't have time to come down here and play with parking issues. He had more important things to do. When I said that to the chief, the chief blew his stack. But, you know, I don't want to listen to this either. And then I also had to sign complaints against the trucks that were there that I had to argue with the police officer to give him a ticket. And I had to sign the ticket and be the one in court. You know, I'm just trying to live and let live and not cause any more problems than we already have. I don't know how to solve the problem, but this isn't going to make the problem go away. It's just going to make it worse. And like I say, on Granville Avenue, there isn't any parking. I don't know, they have to, like Clem said, and I like what he said. He said that the two residential, I mean, two retail stores, make it two retail stores. Obviously, it's just the same thing. Just to make more space. And also, backing off in Gladstone Avenue, on my parking lot, everybody almost has an accident because nobody lets you back off. And you're halfway through, and a car's blowing a horn. Accidents are liable to happen all the time. Well, I don't want to take any more of your time up, but basically, that's my pitch here. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
So Tozey, what time of day was this taken? What time of day were these taken? 11:00. Tractor trailers stopped coming at eight o'clock in the morning, nine o'clock in the morning, 10 o'clock in the morning. They're doing a wonderful job. Al is working with everybody. And, you know, we have, the problem isn't solved. We still have some problems. We still let it slide, you know?
Mr. Tozey, just two quick questions. The tractor trailer, is that barrels, this tractor trailer, or the castle?
Joe, could you still speak into the mic if you're, thank you.
Doesn't matter, you know, who tractor trailer is, it's still blocking the driveway.
But in your picture, this tractor trailer is a castle?
That's correct.
Your parking lot for your building, they back out once a month.
Correct.
Correct. So they don't come out front?
No.
Thank you. We can give you back your picture.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to comment? Howard?
Howard Seiden. 7508 Bay Shore Drive, Margate. I'm not going to go into all the parking problems because I think you've addressed some of them with the smaller size, maybe the turnaround. I didn't see the picture. If you say it works, it's better. We can't afford to lose the loading zone because it's only one of three in the whole neighborhood. And it's not just mine. You say it was a castle's truck. It could be anybody's truck. Everybody parks in a loading zone, whether it be landscapers, parking in a, as long as they have commercial tags, they can park on these zones, and they can go eat at Dino's, they could go shop at, go and share sensations, whatever. So it's, it's important for the whole neighborhood that we try and maintain as much of it as we can. I realize that you're going to lose some of it because no matter what goes there, something's going to take away. I just have to make a comment that I was here when they, when Gluterrys tried to put residences on. And this gentleman, I happened to, wanted to make that comment, that I thought that you saw what they wanted to do, and it was about a retail versus commercial. I disagreed that it was denied then because they came in with all the numbers of the traffic studies, the density, and all that stuff. And I think that what you've seen now come in place of it is a lot worse than what they brought in the first time. I think that this is a lot more dense than what would have been there had they allowed the residential. That's my personal opinion. As opposed to retail versus office, again, parking's a problem. I think if they put in retail, it'll die. You know, it's got to be office-based because retail, no one's going to, we all know that no one's going to go in there for the, for the year round. It's just like Douglas Avenue. Side streets don't work. You know, so they're going to have office space. The trouble is that I also am very worried about where all the parking's going to be, whether it's one employee, one owner, one employee, two employees, six, three offices, two, two people per office, six spaces. They've got to park somewhere. And right now, it's, you can't keep giving away spaces to everybody, saying you have, you're allowed to, you have a variance because there's just nowhere else to go. We've never, you know, I realize it's tough, but if you, if you make any decision. You know, I realize it's tough, but if you make any decision today, it's got to be based on the parking that they don't have. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
David Goddelman, G-O-O-D-E-L-M-A-N. 303 North Claremont. Margate. Thank you for hearing me. I read about this proposal in the paper in the legal notice, and this neighborhood is beyond believable how many cars are in this neighborhood. And I understand from people that I've spoke to that a residential property was proposed for two residences. Now, it seems as though we're getting a proposal for three residences, and somebody seems to be happy about that. Well, I think that you need 30 parking spots when you talk about commercials, so there's no way that this can be... This variance can be granted, the parking variance. Couple things. My parents lived on Franklin Avenue, South Franklin Avenue, and I was zoned late commercial. The residences were zoned late commercial. My mother operated a notary there. There was an answering service also on that street. There's no parking on the south side. It's just... It's unbelievable how anybody could consider taking two houses, you know, putting two houses there and eliminating a business would open up some parking area. So, I'm very pro the residential proposal that was knocked down. You know, they talked... Mr. Barnhart talked about the parking that's there present. Their grandfathered in with their six spots in the restaurant they operate and the flood zone and all that. So, I don't think that's part of the planning board's meeting either. And, you know, Mr. Barnhart mentioned the parking at the bank. The bank has adequate parking. I don't understand what's going on here. Franklin Atlantic variance was granted with commercial on the ground floor and residential up top. And like a year after somebody bought a unit, they said, "I have to sell it. I can't park anywhere on the street." Now, they had a parking spot in the garage, and they had an outside parking spot. And the real estate office took up the whole lot, and there was no parking for any of the residences. So, commercial and residence being mixed are the same. It's the real estate office where Remax is at. That was building can't be more than six, seven years old. I mean, that's basically what I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Come forward, please.
Eugene Carrroccia. I'm at 305 North Thurlow here in Margate. Basically, Margate is concerned with parking, and this has been the major issue since I've been here for decades. And it continues to be, and it's going to get worse. Now, if these people... And I have to applaud, they have a very ambitious and innovative plan here. It's quite nice. But, you know, if they were looking for a variance for one or two cars, say, "Okay, maybe we can stretch a little bit." But they're looking to cut it in half, and they manipulate numbers so it's... First, it's 10, then it's nine. Maybe now it's seven. Yeah? But I think that is bad. This may be something that might be viable if you had two residential units and perhaps two office-retail units. But you also have to realize, that was pointed out before, anytime you have an office, you're not going to have one person and one parking lot. There's going to be a minimum of two, maybe three people in an office. Albeit, a small office is going to have a fair number of people. They need to park. If it's an office of any kind, it's going to generate traffic. And again, where are those people going to park? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Okay, seeing no more, the public portion is closed. Any other comments from the board, discussion? Mike?
If we're making each unit three bedrooms and, you know, we're keeping the office space, what is the variance for the parking? How many spots are required? And there's only nine spots, right? And how many spots would be required?
I think we still... It still needs... Well, it needs six spaces for the three units, for the three residential units, and 14 spaces for the commercial. Is that... Do you agree with that, Mr. Barnhart? A total of 20, and you're providing eight?
That's correct.
Because you reduced the nine to eight, so the parking variance is for 12.
That would be the maximum parking variance.
That's what?
Maximum parking variance. Because the 14 is based on the retail usage.
Right. Retail or real estate or medical office. That's the maximum.
Be used... And that's why I said the minimum. If the variance would be granted for office space, it's 300. So, it would be nine plus six is 15. 15 minus the nine would be six.
Minus eight.
Minus eight.
Would be seven.
Would be seven.
Seven.
Right? We're asking for the maximum, to have the flexibility so that we have the ability to do either an office rental or a retail rental.
Good. So, we have to use the higher number of parking?
Correct.
I'm sorry. Are you ending up with nine or eight?
We will have nine. One site's eight.
Okay. You need 20. Johanna pointed out, you're going from 10 to nine, not nine to eight. So, the deficiency is 20 minus nine, or 11.
Eleven spaces.
Okay. The parking variance is 11. Which two votes?
Well, one for the use variance, one for the parking variance.
Do you think we need to?
Yes.
Do you think that's a good idea? Okay. Well, wait. It could be the use variance as one vote and the site plan and parking variance as the other one.
Correct.
Okay. It's up to the board.
I think... Well, I mean, I would suggest that we do the... Like Mr. Rubin said, we do the site plan and C variances together, and then we do the D variance separately. So, it'd be two votes.
This is a brief closing. We're here tonight, we are asking for a use variance, which gives us the ability to do office and retail. We're asking for the parking variance also. We've amended the plan for the board to do Plan Number Two, which would provide more, a larger loading zone, an additional space on Gladstone. Granville Avenue now gets freed up, so you now have all parking spaces on Granville Avenue because you don't have a curb driveway cut through there. We're reducing the bedroom count from four to three. The variance for the storage has been eliminated. The parking, once again, we're agreeing, is not less than 200, so there would be no restaurants or any of that type of thing being rented. I think Mr. Barnhart had indicated, when you look at the existing conditions of Bowers' Restaurant, where the parking deficiency was, and when you heard Mr. Tozey's testimony with the fact that you have trailers there, all of that is eliminated. Because you're not going to have restaurants there, you're not going to have trailers with respect to any type of a Bowers' operation. So, whatever was there for Bowers is eliminated as part of that enterprise. So, I think that when you look at, is it particularly well-suited? Yes. Are you going to get a heavy retail? I think Mr. Seiden was pretty good. You look at Douglas Avenue, it's dead. Doesn't happen. So, retail on the side street's not going to work. So, it's probably... Can you guarantee it? No, you cannot guarantee it. It is more than likely? Yes. Based on your common sense approach, you're in the city, you see what's going on there all the time, it's not going to work on the side street. So, what you're eliminating is clearly a much more intensely parked area with Bowers as a takeout and a restaurant and deliveries than what we're proposing. And for the board members that were here, when we did come in with the two single-family dwellings, it was the consensus, 7-0. No, we want you to have commercial at the ground level, residential above. We've come back with that, and what we've come back with was what we think is a less intense by saying, we're asking for that use variance to put the office downstairs, which would be less intense than the retail from not only a parking requirement by that. So, I think, given all of the reasons, positive reasons, the particularly well-suited, the negative reasons, the revisions to the parking schedule, they clearly have the people pulling out on the Gladstone, which is one way, gives you a larger loading zone and an additional spot there, three additional spots on Granville, I think that the project is in keeping with what the central business district is requiring. Thank you.
Any other board comments? Stan, I'll leave it up to you.
The application. The application is for site plan approval, D use variance for... To permit office usage as well as the retail usage, which is the only permitted use for the ground floor. Also, with the Plan Number Two proposed by the applicant, it eliminates the accessory structure, storage variance that was initially requested and leaves the parking variances. The parking requirements for this project would be 20 spaces. The proposal is for nine spaces, which leaves an 11-space variance. I'm going to first make a motion in the affirmative... For someone to make a motion in the affirmative, the phrase like... Phrase like the following. For a D variance to permit the... Not only the retail permitted use, but also the office usage on the first floor. So, it would be a motion in the affirmative for that would be the first vote.
Is this for the D variance first?
Yes.
Okay. The only condition for the D variance would be no restaurant or other use that requires more intensive parking than 200 square feet per space.
That would be correct.
That would relate to the use.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I agree with that.
What was asking?
Considering that all the existing development on that side of Granville Avenue on that block is essentially office use from Atlantic to Ventnor, I think that the proposal for office space in this project would advance the purposes of our land use ordinance. I vote yes.
Mike Richmond?
I agree with Clem. I think that there's mostly... There's a lot of offices in that area, and I don't think it would be a detriment to change that from retail to office.
Mike Chrisolli?
We did back down to three-bedroom? That is not a rule on this one?
This is just for the use variance.
Okay. I agree with Mike. I vote yes.
Frank Paulus Adam?
I also agree with my fellow board members on the D variance. I vote yes.
David Carter?
I agree with Clem, and I vote yes.
Desmond Hes?
I'm also going to echo the reasons stated by Mr. Wozleski. I don't have any problem with granting the D variance for the office as well as retail.
Rachel Patterson?
I also agree. Office space makes more sense than retail, so to allow them both makes sense. So, I vote yes.
The D variance passes seven to nothing.
The second vote would be concerning the site plan application for approval of that and also for the C variance for the parking, which I previously enunciated. So, if I could have a motion for that?
The conditions of that motion should include revised plans satisfying all non-wavable conditions of the city engineer, showing the change in the parking plan as submitted tonight, showing the 250 cubic feet of storage space, and redesigning the units to three-bedroom units. Did I miss anything?
That is correct.
The parking variance is for 11 spaces. And they are proposing nine?
Correct.
What was asking?
I think comparing the existing parking requirements for Bowers' Restaurant to the new parking requirements for this project is totally irrelevant. This project has to stand on its own. They're proposing to provide less than half the number of parking places required, which I think totally deviates from any concepts of good planning and certainly a detriment to the public good, considering the terrible parking problem in that area. I vote no.
Mike Richmond?
I'm sorry to interrupt the vote, but we also had to vote on the site plan approval. So...
In my mind, they go hand in hand, so no to vote.
I think that even by reducing the units to three bedrooms, I still think that for that area, the parking variance is too big for residential, and I'm going to vote no.
Mike Chrisolli?
I have to agree with the other two board members at this point. It's just too dense there, and it's... There're not going to be three bedrooms. It's just the way things are done. I'm going to have to vote no.
Frank Paulus Adam?
Summertime traffic is very crowded on the street. The lack of so many parking spaces that we need, I have to vote no on this.
David Carter?
You know, everybody worked very hard to try and move this around, but when you have half the parking places, you know the street, you know the area, you know what goes on there. I have to vote no.
Desmond Hes?
Taking into consideration the standard that would need to be met to grant these requests, and being extremely familiar with these blocks, I would say I travel at the least five to six times down Gladstone, back up Granville, going to the library with my kids, going to Castle's, going to the bank multiple times a day. It's extremely congested, and there's minimal of zero parking. I think the request for such a large variance wasn't supported, and I think it would be an extreme burden to the community. I don't recall being here for the initial presentation of the two homes that was shot down, but keeping with the intent, if you would come here presenting possibly two homes with those commercial properties underneath, I'm not saying that's not being addressed, but this is just too massive for the location. And for all those reasons and the reasons stated by Mr. Wozleski, I'm going to have to vote against the site plan and the parking variance.
Rich Patterson?
I think the applicant did a good job of modifying his proposal. I understand there's an 11-spot deficiency, but none of it is for the residents. They're still providing six spots for the residences, which is what's required. I don't think anybody meets the commercial parking requirements. They solved the problem of backing out onto Gladstone Avenue. I was all set to vote no with your original plan. I didn't see how it could possibly pass. I think you did a good job of modifying it to answer my concern, so I vote yes.
Site plan C variance does not pass, six to one. Six in the negative, one in the positive.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a two-minute break. We're going to take a two-minute break.
I believe it. When you look at this plan, or since one was introduced before, it doesn't sound so bad. It seems individual. It's like having a conference. Washington. Hate to do that. It's a party, very quiet, or currently on the first case, and we've got to go over this. And he plays loud.
I think if they come back with two condos and two commercials, you know, that would give them more room for parking, and they would probably get it.
Next case is Luxuria Homes LLC, 8902 Amherst Avenue, Block 420, Lot 1, in the S-25 District, for a minor subdivision, for a minor subdivision with variances for corner Lot 1, for front yard setback. Taxes are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? Yes, I do. The subject property is vacant land, the house owner was demolished recently, with 80 feet, 80 feet of Amherst Avenue frontage and 74 feet of Thurlow Avenue frontage, constituting in all 5,920 square feet. It is proposed per the Paul Coling Minor Subdivision Plan to divide into two lots, each being 40 by 74, or 2,960 square feet. As such, both intended lots conform to S-25 requirements of 40 feet frontage and 2,500 square feet in area. Also submitted is a set of plans by architect John O'Beulennis for a single-family house on proposed Lot 1.02, the newly created corner lot, with four bedrooms and two parking spaces. The house conforms per zoning, except for the front setback on Thurlow Avenue. Actions required: Minor subdivision, one lot to two, and C variance for front setback of house on Thurlow Avenue. 18.9 feet is required by the 200-foot survey versus proposed setback of 10 feet. Comments and conditions. As to the subdivision, it, it meets size and width criteria, and the board should approve it, conditioned upon revised plans conforming to all non-wavable city engineer requirements. Standard. Two, as to the front setback matter, site visits will indicate whether the benefits outweigh detriments in terms of impacts, if any, on neighbors regarding view, light, and air obstruction, building mass, or aesthetics. Three, note that the porch setback on Thurlow Avenue is not an issue. Its 200-foot survey indicates a requirement of nine feet three inches, and it is setback 10 feet. Also, the Amherst Avenue setbacks at seven feet exceed the five feet required there. Note also, there is a larger setback for the Thurlow front wall, where the porch sits in front of the wall, softening the setback issue at the critical corner and opening sightlines. Finally, the board must consider the inherent hardship of the land configuration. Because the proposed corner lot has only 40 feet measured back from Thurlow Avenue, it is different from every other lot on that block, stretching all the way to Monmouth Avenue. All the other lots have double the depth, or 80 feet. This makes it difficult to design a house which would have the very narrow depth of 16.1 feet because of front setback of 18.9 feet and rear of five. Would such a house be out of character with the neighborhood, and possibly an aesthetic detraction as well? Finally, keep in mind the lot area at 2,960 exceeds the minimum requirement by 460 square feet, or 18 percent, and the total building coverage is 38.6 percent below the required 40. Also, the total lot landscaping is 52 percent, as opposed to 35 required, and front landscaping on Amherst is 86 percent, and on Thurlow is 93 percent, as compared to 60 percent required. No additional conditions are suggested at this time, and the city engineer's letter is attached.
Good evening. Brian Calley, head of the law firm, Callahan Thompson Thompson, on behalf of Luxuria LLC. Just for the record, all jurisdictional requirements have been met. I know we have a long agenda, the first one took up some time, so very quickly, we're seeking tonight a minor subdivision, buy-right minor subdivision. We're seeking a C variance off of Thurlow, requirement 18.9. We're at 10 feet there. I have Mr. O'Beulennis, who's the architect who can be sworn. I have Paul Coling, who has provided the minor subdivision plan. Mr. Bergman, very quickly, I'll run you through it. We have A1, which is Paul Coling's subdivision plan, A2, site plan prepared by Mr. O'Beulennis, A3, elevations, and A4, floor plans. Let me call Mr. O'Beulennis, and he can walk you through the project.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Bergman, do I need to qualify Mr. O'Beulennis as a licensed architect? John, why don't you walk them through where the property exists and what we're proposing to do?
John, take the mic, please.
We have a corner property on Amherst and Thurlow, and the long side is facing Thurlow, with a narrow side of 40 feet on Amherst. And we propose to build a two-and-a-half-story home. On the first floor, it's a, it's a very classic beach open plan with no bedroom spaces. It's all living, dining, kitchen, and utility spaces, mudroom, and then parking at the, at the side yard, loading into Thurlow Avenue. Second floor, there are two bedrooms, and these are two-bedroom suites. One's a master bedroom and a mini, sort of mini-master bedroom. And then third floor, there are two more bedrooms. Again, two sort of mini suites, each one with a bathroom, two-and-a-half stories of a residential.
We're asking for a C variance the night along Thurlow Avenue.
Yes.
Why don't you give the board a little bit of why we're requesting this?
Well, with the prevailing front yard survey, we're required to set the house back about 18, almost 19 feet off of Thurlow, which in essence cuts the property in half. When you have a 40-foot wide on one side, and then the minimum requirement is a five yards, five-foot setback, we can, I can design a house that's 16 feet wide, but I don't think that's appropriate for this neighborhood. So it's a real squeeze play on, on Thurlow Avenue. So we're proposing to, to push that forward a little bit to a 10-foot setback, as opposed to the 18.9.
And how did you soften that edge along the front porch?
Well, the idea is that because it's a corner property, that we stagger that corner with a porch, and that the main building mass itself is pushed back off the corner. So as you turn the corner, there's, there's light and air with a porch at that, at that corner. So it allows views, you know, breezes of that nature.
And, and the front yard, which would have been a minimum of five, you push back?
The front yard on Amherst, yes. It's a seven-foot setback.
Once again, from a C variance...
I don't, because, again, if you look at the total square footage of the home, it's very consistent with the homes of, you know, two-and-a-half stories in that neighborhood.
Landscaping-wise, overall landscaping?
We will exceed that on Thurlow, it's, it's again with a 10-foot setback. It's all landscaped, I think it's, it's 80 or 90, it's a, it's a big percentage of all landscaping. With the narrower Amherst side, again, we exceed the requirement for the landscaping there.
Even with the 10-foot setback, building coverage, we're not...
We're below the building coverage, yes.
Aesthetic enhancement?
Asking an architect, you're asking an architect. Yes, it's, we, I think we enhance the neighborhood aesthetically, yes.
I don't have any other questions, Mr. O'Beulennis.
Any no questions from the board? Is there anyone here from the public who would like to ask a question or speak?
I was going to just ask very quick. On the subdivision, do you want me to have Mr. Coling as the surveyor testify that it's a buy-right subdivision?
No, thank you. Anyone from the public like to speak? Please come forward, be sworn in. John, would you give her the microphone? Mr. O'Beulennis?
I can't hear you. Dina Whitfield, 222 North Sumner Avenue. N.A. Yes, I do. I have a question. I understand both properties are going to face Thurlow Avenue. Both properties will face Thurlow?
We're already discussing the one property on the corner.
I thought there are two houses going to be built.
No, we're, we're talking about one house here.
Both properties face Amherst, and the front door on Amherst.
On both properties?
On both properties.
What's the second property? What did I miss?
I thought it was a, it could be two, two houses built on that.
Yes, there are two single-family homes. The second lot is not required.
Which one is? The one at Thurlow and Amherst?
Yes. Thurlow and Amherst requires the variance.
And what is that going to face? Amherst or Thurlow?
The front door faces Amherst.
And where's the driveway going to be?
Driveway's on Thurlow.
Driveway's on Thurlow, so that, this is a safe way.
I agree with that.
Are you talking about the middle lot or the corner lot?
I'm talking about the lot at, at Thurlow and Amherst.
That driveway is on Thurlow Avenue.
So I will be looking at what? I'm, I'm, because I'm right up against that property.
No, hold on a second. Brian, can you show her the plan that shows the subdivision? Ms. Whitfield, you're, you're not up against this house. There's a house going to be, there's... There's a house going to be, there's going to be a house between you and this house.
There is?
Yes.
I'll be sharing the plan. This is the, this was the existing house.
Okay.
This is the subdivision which will create two lots. So, here, this is Amherst. This is Thurlow.
All right.
So, the house we're discussing tonight is on the corner, so it will be setback seven feet off of Amherst, ten feet off of Thurlow, with parking on Thurlow. The interior lot?
Okay, that's the one I'm concerned about.
Will have a single-family house, no variances being requested for that particular lot.
And that parking, that driveway will come off Amherst because it's a landlocked piece?
It will come off of Amherst.
Without a variance, yes.
I was, okay, so I'll be looking at a driveway, again, like I was before. It'll be in the same driveway cut-in or curb cut that they had before?
We don't, we don't know where it'll be on the lot, but you may, may not, it might be on the other side.
There's one there now, so in other words, I'll be looking at a driveway and a garage.
Unless it's on the long porch side of the lot, you won't be.
I doubt that.
The only, the only good part is you get some additional space because the house, the new house is further away.
I mean, further away?
It's further off your lot line. Where there's nine feet here, you're up against it right here with a foot and a half to two feet.
Oh, okay. Well, it was a garage, all right. All right, so I guess my questions have been answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public portion is closed. Any further? No? Oh, I'm sorry.
C-A-R-R-O-C-C-I-A. I do solemnly swear.
Again, I must applaud the imagination here. Certainly, almost anything that's going to be there would be better than what Eric had. So, I thank you for that. I do have a concern with the setback on this particular property cornering Thurlow and Amherst. Now, the new construction has to be elevated, is that not correct?
Yes.
It's going to be elevated how far above street level? Eight, ten?
We don't know how far above the street level. We know that it has to be at elevation eleven for the first floor.
It's elevated over sea level, not over street level.
Okay. So, judging by other houses that have been elevated around that area, although there might be some variation, they're going to be up maybe six to eight feet?
Wait a minute, I can answer your question. Existing structure that was there now was nine, so you're adding two more feet to the existing structure that was there. The original house that was there was nine foot. You're going to be eleven, so you're going to be about maybe three to four feet higher, I mean, off grade.
Okay, so to elevate, for FEMA and all this, it's going to be about three feet above where it is now?
Roughly.
The porch design, I think, is very good for openness, but I think having to elevate the house also creates a visual going around that corner, which to me had, living right down the street there, had been a problem with the previous situation there. I think visually, I agree, it would be better, but I do believe that they want a setback that's just about fifty percent of what the code requires. Again, if we're talking about a foot or two, I think you can stretch that. I think going back or coming forward onto Amherst and Thurlow, that much is a significant amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Public portion is closed.
I'd like to make a motion.
Any further discussion on the board?
It said ten foot on this print, and on the subdivision it shows five foot.
It says ten foot, correct?
Five foot of the subdivision to the property line, and on over here it shows ten foot.
Subdivision was just set based on the side yards and the front yards. It is a ten-foot setback is what we're requesting tonight. That is correct? Yes.
And you call Thurlow the front, but the front door's on Amherst, correct?
Your ordinance requires us to have the two fronts because it's a corner lot.
Corner lot, okay.
Corner lot.
All right, Rogers will read the conditions, and I hear a motion.
Give me a second.
The only condition I have is the satisfaction of the non-wavable city engineer requirements.
That's correct on the subdivision portion, correct? Yeah.
So, do I hear a motion for this C variance with the condition Roger just said?
I'll make it.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the applicant, application because it's very minor, as obviously when you see the second lot, which is an interior lot, wouldn't require any variances. If it wasn't on a corner, we wouldn't be voting on this, so I think it's very minimal and it'd be all code.
Mike Richmond?
I'm going to vote yes. I really don't see any detriment to the neighborhood by reducing that side yard setback, and I also think that the architect's attempt to put the porches on the corner was a good one, and I'm going to approve it.
Clem Waslewski?
Well, I think the benefits here clearly outweigh any detriments, but everyone knows my feeling on these subdivisions. I abstain.
I abstain.
I'm sorry, but the detriment was the house that was there, so I grant yes for a minor subdivision and a C variance.
Commissioner Tolby?
I vote yes. I agree with Jim. I think it's, it's an improvement over what was there, and it's, the ask is minor in comparison.
Mike Chrisstaldi?
I'm going to have to disagree with the board members. Apparently, nobody goes down Pembroke to Amherst. I've almost hit cop cars three times this week, let alone other cars. You cannot see past them. I think pushing out on the street here is a detriment. I vote no.
Rich Patterson?
Clem, apparently, an abstention goes with the majority, so if this passes, your abstention is a yes vote on this subdivision. I just wanted you to know that. Yes, I vote yes for the aforementioned reasons.
The motion passes five to one.
Should be nine votes, John. Nine? Oh, I'm sorry, then I need two more votes.
Craig Mamasana?
Did you vote?
I also agree with the board members. I vote yes for it. It's a big improvement on the project, on the, on the block. I vote yes.
And one more.
David Carter?
Well, anything that changes on that corner would be an improvement, but going from, what did, I have to vote no. Home again, sir.
Five, six to two to one. Next case is 102 South Vendo Avenue LLC. 102 South Vendo Avenue, Block 23, Lot 2, in the S-40 district to grant a C variance for fence height. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? Yes, I do. Subject property is a two-story, single-family home under construction on a lot of fifty by eighty. Which house and lot backs up to the parking lot and accessway from the parking lot of the Ocean View condominiums? The grade of the subject lot and that of the condo parking lot are the same. Cars from the condo are parking immediately adjacent to and parallel to the rear lot line of the subject house. The actual condo building is about twenty feet from the rear property line. The applicant requests an eight-foot-high vinyl fence running along the fifty-foot-long rear property line to create a visual, noise, and privacy buffer between the uses. The variance required is fence height, five feet permitted, six feet is permitted with the pool. The proposal is eight feet. Comments? This height would match the height of the remaining four houses between the subject house and the beach, all of which have been there as long as anyone can remember, and serve the same purpose, to create an appropriate barrier between two distinct density types, single-family and multifamily condo with parking lot. Two, site visits will assist board members regarding whether or not the extra feet of height obstructs ocean views to the house on the Atlantic Avenue side of the subject property. Three, the applicant should clarify if the fence would run the entire fifty feet or perhaps not be necessary behind the applicant's garage. It should be pointed out that the fence may not encroach onto the condo parking lot at any point. Also, there may be discussion as to fence color, noting that the other eight-foot fences are darker wood finish, and a consistent look might be more attractive. No conditions are suggested at this time.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Eric Goldstein. I'm the attorney for the applicant tonight. Due to the applicant's illness and his family, I'm also an authorized representative of the applicant. I'm the only one who'll be given testimony if you have any questions. Bergman already, but nobody else will be here but me. Currently, the house is under construction. It's about two-thirds complete. The garage is already in place, which is a foot off of the property line. The proposal is to build an eight-foot-high vinyl fence along the property line, which will run behind the garage. So, the fence will be right up against the parking lot of the Ocean View condominium. From the rear of the house on Vendo, you can see directly into the Ocean View condominium windows. If the fence were erected, you would not have that issue, and the Ocean View wouldn't be into the rear from their side as well, onto Vendo. I've spoken with a representative of the Ocean View condominium association, Lynn Callahan. She said she received our notices. We had a long talk about the project. She actually is happy that the fence is going up. They don't want their people looking into our backyard. We don't want the backyard looking onto their people, so they don't have a representative here, although they've said I can make the representation, that they have no objection and are pleased with the height of the fence. In actuality, if you go down that parking lot row, this would be the lowest of the fences. The fence next door is eight feet high with one-and-a-half-foot posts, so at one point, those fences are nine-and-a-half feet high. There's actually a corrugated metal fence directly behind the house on the beach, which sits on top of the seawall, which is approximately ten feet high. So, this proposal is just a new visually attractive, eight-foot-high vinyl fence, to the extent that the board has any input on color. Applicant does not have a preference if it should be a little bit darker to match the other fences. That's fine. I did check with the people at the Ocean View. They don't care what color the fence is, so it's really either an aesthetic issue with the board to go in on a specific range of colors. It could be tan or darker, or they could paint the fence if need be. I will point out, however, that three of the fences between the subject property and the beach are either white or once were white and have kind of faded, or a gray metallic corrugated slatted fence all the way next to the beach.
Those fences are in such disrepair, you should put up a fence and let them match what you put up.
Well, it's really up to your, to the board's discretion. I know those fences are in pretty bad disrepair. I was at the project a couple of times today, so I think anything there is an improvement, and certainly the positive criteria outweighs the negative. Right now, board has in its packages a four-and-a-half-foot old fence that was at the property before it was torn down, which really doesn't supply any privacy. And the new eight-foot fence won't obstruct the view from the Atlantic Avenue house. They don't, they don't have an ocean view going backwards because the condominium's there. So, the only thing the eight-foot-high fence will do behind 102 South Vendo is increase the privacy between client's property and the Ocean View condominiums and vice versa. Board has any input on color or type of texture? Applicant's open for suggestions, but that's.
Eric, quick question. Picture you're showing us, is that what you're talking about?
That's a, similar, similar, yes.
Similar, that's fine.
And obviously, there's no pool in behind the house on Vendo. That's just a house with a pool.
What color is the house?
Don't know yet. There's no, the house is not yet under contract or is going under contract soon. I think the end user will have, I think it's proposed to be a tan or white, but it's not sided, so if a buyer comes along and wants to change the color, that's easy enough to do. It's not a spec house. It was built for someone in mind who hasn't signed the contract yet.
I don't think we'd need to. With the disrepair of those other fences, I would think they're either going to collapse and have to be rebuilt and hopefully come before the board when they rebuild them. You're matching something that's dilapidated, and I don't think we should, unless the board thinks we do. Is there any?
I agree with that. I, you know, I think you're adding a little bit more of a burden onto them too, because colored fences tend to cost more money, and I'm also having an issue as a builder with another vinyl product that is darker, and they tend to fade more than a lighter fence. So, I can't see imposing that on the applicant.
So, really, we have no preference. If the board doesn't have a preference, maybe the end user ultimately buys the house, will choose the color, but that's.
I think we can leave it up to you. It's going to be the nicest fence there.
Probably. The Art Deco fence at the beach is kind of interesting. It's got a slatted, corrugated.
Interesting's a good word for it.
It looks like those shanties in Brazil with the houses built on top of each other.
Exactly.
But it's beachfront on Vendo, so I guess it's not that bad. In any event, I think that the visual, pleasing visual aspects of the fence that will be built there certainly outweighs what's there now. There is no obstruction. We don't have a property behind us that has an issue with it, so based on the evidence that's before the board, I would suggest that variance be granted, but I'll certainly answer questions as need be, both as the attorney and as a rep of the applicant.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is anyone here from the public who would like to speak? Public portion is closed. Like to hear?
I'll make a motion.
Like to hear a motion?
I'll second.
For a C variance or a S?
No conditions.
No condition. All the roll.
Tom Collins?
Don't get her nervous. I vote in favor of the application. I think anything you do in that back area is going to make a major improvement, and it's going to be a plus for the neighborhood and an attribute. It's probably going to cause everybody else to start reinvesting into their property. It's based on the location and what the conditions are, but that's why I vote a yes.
Mike Waslewski?
I also vote in favor of the application. It's certainly keeping within ten of the land use ordinance, and I think we can leave the color selection up to the owner.
Mike Richmond?
I vote in favor of the application. I think that separating the multi-use from the single-family is a good idea, so I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
I vote in favor of the application. There's no detriment.
You wish for a quality?
I too vote in favor.
Mike Chrisstaldi?
I vote in favor of the application.
Craig Mamasana?
I also vote, vote in favor.
David Carter?
I vote in favor of the application. Definitely an improvement.
Rich Patterson?
For the aforementioned reasons, I also vote in favor.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Nine to one.
Joanne S. Chertok Trust, 3 South Sumner Avenue, Block 119, Lot 2, in the S-60 district to grant a C variance for pool setbacks and possibly others. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? The subject property is a one-story, single-family house to be demolished and replaced by the submitted two-and-a-half-story house designed by Mark Suwaki, architect. The lot is irregular, having frontage of fifty-seven point ninety-eight feet, depth of eighty feet on the right, eighty and a quarter feet on the left, and a rear line of fifty-one point sixty-four feet. Total area being four thousand three hundred eighty-four point eight square feet, less than a full six thousand square foot S-60 lot, but capable of building upon as it exceeds the minimum lot width requirement of forty. In the rear right quadrant of the lot, a lap pool is proposed, having dimensions of eight by twenty-nine. The proposed pool is set at nine feet eight inches from the right property line and six feet from the rear line. The pool is partly under the second
The pool is partly under the second floor of the house, and that second floor is supported by three columns that extend 2 feet further into the right setback, so they are 7 feet 8 inches from the right sideline. In all other respects, the house appears to meet zoning requirements. So the variances are rear setback for the pool, 6 feet as designed versus 10 required; side setback for the pool, 9 feet 8 inches versus 10 feet required; side setback for the columns, 7 feet 8 inches as designed versus 10 feet minimum required. Comments? It would not be altogether impertinent if the board inquired as to why a 4-inch problem, or possibly even a 2-foot column problem, could not be eliminated by some crafty redesign, shifting, pairing, or juggling. That said, 4 inches for a pool is de minimis. And note the proposed evergreen buffer strip, right and rear. Those plantings should be clearly specified for the board and then imprinted on revised plans. Also, the proposed vinyl fence could be discussed as to why not 6 feet high instead of the 5 feet as shown. The rear pool setback variances would relate to the board's thinking about impacts, if any, on the yard and house to the rear. Note that the right side of the house reseeds by 8 feet at the pool location, giving the right-side neighbor a setback to the house wall for half the first floor of 18 feet. Also, the house to the right is situated at least 30 feet from the property line, which of course could change in a future rebuild. Note also that total landscaping appears to just make 35 percent, not the 49 percent stated in the zoning chart based on my calculations. If approved, revised plans should clearly state the rear and side, state the rear and side yard decks will be installed permanently on sand as required by the ordinance. No additional conditions at this time.
Ms. Rubin, Ms. Patterson, members of the board, thank you. My name's Chris Ballance, and I represent the Joanne Chertok Trust and Mark and Harry Chertoks, who are here this evening with respect to the property, 3 South Sumner Avenue, identified as a tax back as Lot 2 on Block 119 in the S-60 zone. The Chertoks own that property and propose to tear down the older rancher-style 50s home and build a new two-and-a-half-story, single-family home at the property. The principal structure, for the most part, conforms in all respects to zoning. However, we are requesting three variances. And in conjunction with those variances, I would like to start circulating free pictures. The variances all derive from the existing conditions in the rear yard of the house. If you look at the picture without circulating, for those of you who live in the property, you will see that, however it occurred, the house to the rear is 3 feet off the property line and two stories of sheer stucco. In that rear yard, the house on the parkway side on the Chertoks is a stucco wall garage. To put a pool in that particular rear yard, it would be a pool that would get no sun exposure whatsoever. cleverly or creatively, Mr. Zawaki, to his credit, suggested the pool be located on the side of the house. If you look at the conditions there, if the sun comes up in the east, they could actually get sun for most of the day because of the substantial side yard also of the neighbor to the right. Side yards are so minimum, what Mark came up with is to tuck the pool up against the side of the house at the first floor, but that requires a little, that requires some side yard setback really, not to a structure, but to columns that can only leave with the second floor above the pool, allowing the sun kind of to come in onto the second floor as it comes over the building. But the variances therefore are, the columns, which Mark will explain better, are setback at 8 feet. Mr. Rubin, the columns in the side yard are 8 feet, not 7.8 or 7 feet 8 inches. It's 8 where 10 is required.
It's really hard to decipher in the plan. You're showing 9.8 feet to the pool, and then you're stating that the columns are 2 feet. So that, I just did math. Yeah, but the math doesn't, the math doesn't add up.
The setback to the columns will be 8 feet versus 10. And also, 4 inches to the edge of the pool where 10 is required. That's in the right side yard. We're also requesting a variance in the rear yard for the pool where 10 is required. We're asking for 6 feet, which is something that I have been before this board recently, and it's a request under the right circumstances that the board has agreed to. And I think the circumstances in this instance with the sheer wall to the rear really doesn't create any privacy or security issues when you couple that with a 6-foot fence versus a 5-foot fence, which the Chertoks will do. That having been said, Mark Zawaki designed the house. I'd like him to speak to it, explain a little bit more detail of how this is going to be carried out. Mark, you're a licensed special architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Have you prepared the plans that we're considering?
That's correct.
Would you come and touch upon the existing conditions of the property, the ways it's posed, and get some three variances?
Okay, as stated, we have an existing structure right here on the existing site plan, and as you can see, there's a garage on this site, and of course, the Chertoks have a garage on this, and the back property is that house with the 3-foot setback. When they first came to me, they wanted to have a lap pool for health reasons, and I told them it's going to probably be almost impossible because of the size of the lot. So what they had to do, of course, is give up living space for the pool. Okay? And you have to understand that the pool is, is open. It's a void. You can see through it. It's not, it's more transparent. It's not mass. Okay? It's not, okay? The only structure that you're going to see are four columns. You have one here, 2, 3, 4. Okay? And these are the four columns here, which would be kind of a facade, and on top of that, we would design it so it would look like a trellis. Okay? Which would also allow light to filter through into the pool. Okay?
If the board looked at the rear elevation on their plan, this trellis, the left side of that elevation, the pool's on that.
Correct.
And the second floor is above that.
Right. The second floor, of course, meets the setback of 10 feet. It's the 8 feet that we're asking for is to a column, which supports the second floor.
And the first floor there is but way back, as Mr. Rubin can help, even 3/4.
Right. This is actually like 8'6" offset there that we took away from the building. So it's about 160 plus or minus square feet that we eliminated living space.
To have the pool tucked up against that?
That's correct.
In respect to the rear yard setback, would you touch upon that in the location of the pool?
Well, the rear yard setback, once again, it's a lap pool, so you have to have something that's going to be functional. So the size is an issue, and we tried to get the maximum size, and we did go to a 6-foot setback, not a 5-foot setback. So we went a little bit more.
I'm sorry, you said it's now a 5-foot setback?
It's a 6-foot setback.
It's a 6-foot setback.
Right.
Mark, with respect to the existing conditions of the property, would you obviously improve upon some of the setback conditions, particularly on the right side, existing with driveway, the first floor will be almost double that existing setback?
That's correct. We have an 11-foot setback over here, where the initial setback was like 3, 3.2 feet. 3.2 feet was the...
That's on the left side.
That's correct.
And on the right side, where the pool is building, that setback at least at the first floor is almost what? 18 feet?
This, this one here?
Yes.
No, it's less than that. It's probably about maybe 12 feet.
Right now?
Right.
So it'd be about 18 at the first floor.
Oh, well, at the first floor. Correct. Correct.
Second floor, it's 10 feet.
It's going to be 10 feet. That's correct.
And the front row setback at this particular location, because the average is what?
The average setback turned out to 12'6".
12'6" to the porch?
That's to the porch, because there was no porches. Actually, the porch setback was more than the house setback.
So that the porch setback was 12'6", is that right?
Correct.
But the house setback in front?
The house is setback 20, 20 feet.
So chance of that block?
Sure. Absolutely.
Well, my site visit today, when I measured over the 9 feet 8 inches from that property line behind you, that, that house isn't there. Their yard is there.
Right. It's all open yard. That whole side's all open.
Well, you, what you said before was that you have that big wall of the house back there. Not behind the pool, you don't.
But we have, we have a wall right here.
Rich, I'm talking about if you were situated in a typical location, where it's running longways.
Right. But what you have now is an open yard behind the pool, and behind the fence, there's about a 3-foot elevation where they have a little waterfall going into their yard.
Right.
And what we looked at was that, they don't use that as a scene area. It's really just a fairly dense landscaped area with that fountain.
It is, and you have a 6-foot setback instead of a 10-foot setback.
8-foot setback. 8-foot setback.
6-foot here.
Oh, 6-foot here.
Right.
Right.
And a 6-foot fence.
Right. Which on the other side will be...
The other side is 9...
4'3 and 1/2 foot.
9'8 over here on this side, and 10 feet's required, so it's a 4'4 inch. And the reason why it became that is after investigating a little bit, the pool structure has to be independent of the house structure, so I have to pour a separate shell, so it adds an extra foot to the pool.
No.
So that's one of the reasons why we're going for variance. You know, the one thing that you have to remember, though, is this, this is all open. There's no mass here. It's transparent. The only thing you're going to see is, is a couple of columns and some nice detail and trellis. That's it. No windows, no walls.
This construct of columns and, it's actually a pergola. It's not building per se. It's a pergola, and our ordinance addresses pergolas. Does that apply here at all?
Structure, though.
I think structurally, it's holding up the second floor. I think it's part of the building.
The columns are, but it is a pergola.
Right. That's correct. Yeah, the pergola, the pergola would be the decorative part on top, but the columns are, I think structurally.
They could, they're supporting the pergola too, so...
It's a double edge.
But they support the house, don't they?
It does support the house.
Yeah.
It supports the second floor.
Could it address any concern that that neighbor, they have, they've talked, it may not prove it. We see the plan, he had no problem with location.
Well, that, it's not the neighbor's concern. It's the safety concern that we're knocking 4 feet off, and that board has had trouble in the past knocking 4 feet off of a pool variance. Now, I know ones we have done where there's been blockage in the back and whatever, but you have an open yard with an elevation on the back fence. That's my concern, so address it or not address it, it's, that's up to you.
Rich?
Yes.
Did you say you think that's a 6-foot fence?
They agreed to a 6-foot fence. But on the other side, it's going to be 4-foot max with that buildup over there.
On the other side?
On the other side of the fence.
Here we are.
Yeah. They have a buildup there. You have the garage. I'm on, I'm on Sumner facing Atlantic City. The garage will be gone. You have, going to have a fence back there. On the other side, and on the other side of that fence, you have about a 2-foot elevation right up against the fence.
The berm.
The berm or whatever. And from that, there's a waterfall that goes into their yard. So a 6-foot fence on your side is 4-foot on the other side, and then you only have a 6-foot setback instead of what we consider safe is a 10-foot setback.
If the, if the board were considering 7-foot setback, safe that form of location, sure the Chertoks would have no problem with that?
It's up to the board. I mean, I don't know if, if nobody else on the board has a concern with it. I don't have a concern with it, but does anybody else on the board have a concern with it?
With a 6-foot.
With a 6-foot. You don't have a concern with it?
We do a strawberry, 6-foot fence, strawberry on the left. And that's 6-foot.
Right. But our rule is 10-foot.
I mean, the safety for the setback really is that somebody that would come over a fence would not fall directly into water.
Well, our setback is 10 feet, so that's unlikely, but that's what the city has determined to save.
Right.
Could we allow them a higher fence than 6-foot? So it would be 6-foot on the other side, just a mirror.
If the 2-foot elevation change to 7-foot, some height of fence back there, it doesn't matter if you decide the house.
Right. Yeah, I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about, but it doesn't seem like anybody on the board has a problem with it except Mr. Palmasano, so I wouldn't change it then.
No, I agree with Mr. Patterson.
Okay. Anybody else on the board?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'd like, Mark, to address Roger's first comment. Got 9'8". For 4 inches, why are you pushing for variance?
Well, like I said, it was, it was one of those that when I took the 12-inch wall thickness for the, for the pool, okay, it all added up, 8, you know, 12 inches, 8 feet, 12 inches, 12 inches. That's where it kind of stretched out.
Well, you could easily move that wall between the dining room and the pool.
Yeah, but then, I mean, that dining room...
4, 8, 12 inches. You eliminate a variance.
Yeah, but this is not a big dining room to begin with.
I disagree.
Hey, we're talking 4 inches.
I could easily move that wall a foot, eliminate that variance, minimize the column variance.
That's it. 4 inches.
Does anyone here from the public collect a comment? Uh, so excuse me, Roger.
Can I just ask a question? I don't think the plan, I don't think the plans are clear about the size or species of evergreen shrubs. You want to say something about that, and we'll make it a condition?
We will submit a performing landscaping plan to the zoning officer with all species, numbers, and plans. There will be...
Yeah, but, no, what do you have in mind? The ordinance doesn't require anything. What is it you are suggesting? How many shrubs? At what, you know, at what...
We require two, two trays of every shrub, and we're going to...
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the landscape screen in front of the fence that separates the pool from the neighbors. That.
That.
Yeah.
We were talking about that. Also, are we maybe, will it make sure maybe some stone, like rock, hard?
Asking about the shrub, though.
Will, will there be a kind of a visual obstruction by tall arborvitae's or any, what are your thoughts on that? No? Yes, no?
A tall evergreen species, saltwater, saltwater resistant. I don't want to commit to arborvitae's. I hate arborvitae's.
So do I, but you, there's, there's nothing out there in it. I just put 100 arborvitae's in my yard. There's nothing else out there.
Nothing works as well, unfortunately.
Not required.
Yes, you're going to put a tall evergreen that fits in there.
Is there an idea of a screen?
Screen and safety.
And what, and what height?
Planting height.
Tall evergreens 3 feet high.
Planting height. I said planting height.
Tall evergreens planted at 3 feet high. Well, I mean, you can make a joke about it if you want, but, but often when there are pool setback variance issues, part of the rationale is an evergreen screen. I don't know if the board cares in this instance or not.
I don't.
I understand that if they're going to be planting on the inside of 6-foot fence.
Right.
I don't know that there's, unless, unless you tell me, definitely they're going to give their point to why an 8-foot, at planting height, arborvitae's for $900 versus 3-foot planting height arborvitae's at 8.
Do you have any, anybody else care?
I don't, I don't think we should make any requirements if it's inside the fence.
Because we can absolutely, because it is, they're asking for a six, a four-foot variance there, and it would block anything else from coming through there, it would help, so we do have that right and we can do that, we may not decide to do it, but we do have that right to do it. I understand it's on the inside, Tom. What's it gonna block coming through? The kids coming over the fence. You have a problem with that? We may or may not do that, I'm just saying we have the right to do that and that would be the purpose.
I agree, you have absolute right to do that. We spoke to the neighbor on the right, she was here earlier, she was concerned about one office, her property, we told her as a condition of approval we'd agree that the city engineer's office would give a trade-off plan, and that would be, just for at least one year, Rick, you follow Rick memory and Kathy Norris issue as well, and she was, that was her only concern, we decided, we explained to her that the one office required to be directed toward the street and stay on our lot, but I told her just to be sure that that used to, for a few small hours off.
Mr. Ballenson, for the record, who was that resident, was it Catherine Grande? Yes.
We will ask you for an escrow for that city engineer review.
What you say about additional greenery is perfectly applicable, it's a trade-off of safety, we're getting less, less safety with only a six-foot setback, so we'll get additional safety by the added greenery.
Five-foot planting height line, you need to.
That would be fine. Any other questions from the board comments? Anyone here from the audience like to speak?
Make a motion.
Public portion is closed. List the conditions, please.
The conditions would be revised plans showing the six-foot high fence and showing that the rear inside decks and patios that have been proposed are, will be installed permeably, showing a rear evergreen planting strip at planting five feet high, and providing a drainage plan for a review of the city engineer and the appropriate escrow.
Those plannings wouldn't have to continue where that house wall is right there, we're just talking in the pool area.
On the right side?
Yes, well, and the rear, where it's open.
Oh, just adjacent to the pool?
Where it's open, behind the house.
Just behind the pool. Just adjacent to the rear setback to pool?
Where the rear house is to the property line, there to the property line, yes. You don't need to put those trees for protection behind that big wall.
And not running down the road?
No.
Where's the driveway? Not for the, that's a four-inch variance, you don't need to do that. That's what you meant, right?
Correct. What did you just ask for?
I didn't hear what he said.
What did you just ask for?
They're gonna put an extra planning, a five-foot planning behind the pool where we're giving the variance, it'll be a five-foot, five-foot planning instead of three-foot, but along the side they didn't need, it was a four-foot variance.
She's got like a six-foot.
I mean, a four-inch variance.
She's got like a 16-foot evergreen on that side.
Yeah. So do I hear a motion with those conditions?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, Mike.
I vote in favor of the application, I think this is really nice design, I think the owners went to great pains to get what they wanted and to actually keep the neighborhood very nice, there's no negatives to the neighborhood and it's a great improvement to that area, so I vote in favor.
Mike Wazlaski?
I still think the dining room wall could be moved, a couple variances eliminated, but it's a very minimal thing, so it's not that significant, I vote in favor.
Mike Richmond?
I think the four-inch variance is de minimis, I think the columns, it's not like we're asking for a wall variation, it's just the columns, so I don't think that's an issue. I still don't know what the safety issue is between a six-foot and a 10-foot set, pool setback, I think that should be revisited and I think we should change that setback variance, I mean setback issue, so I'm gonna vote in favor of it.
Jimmy Galantino?
I think the application was processed very good, I don't see any detriment to the neighbors for what we came up with a conclusion on the height of the fence, and I vote in favor.
Commissioner Talby?
I too vote in favor of it, I think the setback, the request for the variance considering the open space and the light and air, I, I think it's beautiful, congratulations to the Sher Tox, it's gonna be a beautiful home, I vote yes, thank you.
Mike, Mr. Talby?
With the rest of the board members, I agree that this is an improvement and I vote yes.
Frank Palaceno?
The side pool setback is minimus and the columns are a neat design to the, to the pool and the structure, I like that a lot, and I vote in favor of it.
David Carter?
I vote in favor of the application and I think it's a definite, nice change.
Rich Patterson?
I think it's a wonderful, unique design, I think you did a great job giving the people what they wanted, I also agree that the pool setback issue should be revisited, I think 10 feet might be excessive, but that's the rule now for safety sake, that's the rule and that's the reason I raised the issue, we're following the rules we have now, I would like to see that addressed in the future, but I think you did a wonderful job giving those people what they needed, and thank you for compromising on whatever you compromised on, so I vote yes.
Motion passes, Mike to the House.
Thank you very much.
Irwin Rachel, 344 North Rumson Avenue, Block 619, Lot 17, in the S-40 district, to grain a C variance for combined side setbacks and possibly others. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? Yes, I do, the subject property is a two-story, single-family house with attached garage on the left side toward the rear, on a Sunset Canal lot of 60 feet frontage by 100 feet in depth, of which the uplands portion is about 60 feet. The house presently has four bedrooms on the second floor and the applicant wishes to redesign the second floor by constructing a new bedroom over the existing garage, adding a bathroom and therefore ending with no change in the bedroom count, creating no issue regarding parking. In fact, there are two spaces outside and one in the garage, a total of three, whereas two are needed before and after. The new above-garage bedroom would have behind it, overlooking the water, a small deck, three feet out by 12 feet wide. This is essentially a walkout deck, not one suitable for entertaining or even sitting very comfortably. Variance is required, I would point out that the site plan is a copy of the survey and not precisely to scale, the board may or may not wish to impose a condition for a more precisely scaled site plan to assure the dimensions given and elevation and floor plan drawings are adhered to it. In any case, the variances appear to be: left-side setback 10 feet required versus 6.03 feet to the bedroom buildup over the garage, combined-side setbacks 22 feet required versus 12.04, adding together the left side of 6.03 and the right side of what looks like 6.01 feet. Comments? Coverage is not a variance as decks and porches are not counted in coverage. Two, as stated, parking more than complies. Three, the principal issue to be judged based on site visits and testimony is whether the proposed variance area, the left roughly half of the buildup over the garage obstructs views or light and air or creates undue building mass as perceived by neighbors and the neighborhood in general. As you will see, the lot to the left is vacant and will have a house someday and the board may consider it also in terms of the above criteria. If approved, FEMA compliance must be assured per the 50% rule under jurisdiction of the construction office. As in other cases, the board may give weight to the retention of a more traditional old Margate-type house as being more desirable than perhaps the larger full build-out replacement house that could eventuate and which will be at least delayed for a time by permitting the proposed enhancement. No additional conditions are suggested at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Paper change. Paper change. Chris, hold up a minute. Mr. Wazlaski?
I have a problem.
Would you put on your, Mike?
I have a problem with this project, these are architectural plans prepared by a professional engineer, which is prohibited by law in the state of New Jersey. This is a publication that was presented to all municipalities a few years ago from the New Jersey Society of Architects, has a chart, lists building categories that can be designed by architects and engineers, under the category residential it says none can be designed by engineers except incidental to engineering projects. Further says licensed architect shall prepare and seal drawings for all residential buildings in the state. Any person who knowingly aids or assists the illegal practice of architecture or the illegal preparation of drawings may be subject to severe penalty. I do not think we should hear this case.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wazlaski, I'm aware that this board regularly accepts plans prepared by contractors and/or home, Jattico is a professional engineer and a friend of the applicant's and doing this is a favor to him, just as if you sat down unlicensed with your builder, came up with a plan to do a deck for a small addition, submitted it to this board, and they can sit, seen that happen more than 50 times before this board.
So does murder, but it's not legal.
I'm sorry?
So does murder, but it's not legal.
I'm not sure you're right about that, I, not the murder part, but the drawing part. I think a homeowner can in fact submit.
We're not talking about a homeowner, we're talking about a professional engineer.
This is done for a fee, does that matter?
Correct.
Was this done for a fee, does that matter, or this was done for a friend?
Doesn't matter, do it as a favor, you can buy him dinner.
I'm asking, was it done for a fee, so it was not done for a fee?
Do it as a favor for, for Mr. Reekley, and they are longtime friends.
Does that matter?
No, it doesn't, a homeowner is permitted to do plans for his own home if he's gonna be his own contractor, not a friend, not the builder, not an engineer.
Aside from the fact, as you well know, when you build an addition over an existing structure, you need an analysis by an engineer to make sure that an existing structure can support the additional top, another reason why Mr. Jattico was retained to assist in this application.
You do not need an engineer, an architect is qualified to do that.
Do a structural analysis?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, can we ask our solicitor's advice?
I couldn't hear you.
Look, I, I think that the purpose of an expert is to aid the trier of fact, which is the board here, so if he has something that he can add to that concerning the setbacks that are requested here for variances and design, and I think, I think, I would think that it would aid the board in determining whether or not he's qualified to testify or not, I think he's qualified to testify as an expert, under our rules, maybe under administrative rules, he may have problems, but for purposes of the board, I would say that he's permitted to testify as an expert, as long as I feel that he'll, as long as I feel and the board feels he'll aid the board in understanding what the project is about.
I don't think that's Mr. Wazlaski's point, I think what he's saying is we can't accept these plans or look at these plans as being reliable because it's not prepared by an architect, I'm not saying this, I think that's what Mr. Wazlaski was saying.
And Mr. Patterson, Mr. Wazlaski may be right, Jimmy has to review them for purposes of issuing the building contract, there's nothing that says this board can't look at these plans and review them and determine whether they're variance warranted before an architect is obtained, paid, signed plans to submit to a building.
That's not correct, the way the state is the laws that govern the practice of architecture cover preliminary work, not just construction documents submitted for permit. I don't have that, I don't have that with me, I have given it to our solicitor though on previous occasion.
Are you about to say?
I can't take part in it, I'd be aiding and abetting illegal practice.
My advice is that you can proceed, but it's up to the board, my advice is that you can proceed with an engineer testifying.
Thank you, my name is Chris Ballenson, I represent Herb Reekley, who is here with us this evening, Block 619, Lot 17, in the S-40 zoning district. Relatively modest request this evening, Mr. Reekley, Mr. Reekley merely proposes to construct a single-story addition over his, a portion of his existing garage, which falls within the existing building footprint. Nonetheless, as a result of the existing building footprint, the side yard setback on the left side is required to be 10 feet, it's 6.03 feet, the combined side yard setbacks are required to be 22 feet, as a result of the existing deficient setbacks, it is only 12.04 feet, those are the two variances. The addition, as you see on the plans, is directly over the garage, it is setback in the front yard more than 20 feet, in the rear yard it is setback more than 17 feet, and in fact, in the right, in the left side yard, it is designed to match the existing setback, only above the garage, with no further approachment beyond footprint. Mr. Jattico, you have.
Let me interrupt you right there, just for the record, Mr. Galantino and Mr. Wazlaski have recused themselves. Go ahead.
Mr. Jattico, you'll need to be sworn in.
Mr. Jattico, you're a licensed professional engineer? And working with Mr. Reekley, drew up these plans for the small addition?
Yes.
And with respect to what I just spoke to the board about, concerning the addition and its location, have no further expansion of the footprint, that is all.
That is correct.
And that is what is shown on these plans and photographs.
Absolutely.
The coverage of the building is not greasing at all, the setback of the addition is in excess of 20 feet from the front yard, and approximately 17 feet of work from the bulkhead in the rear yard, and the board well knows that if a new house were to be constructed on this lot, the rear yard setback is permitted to be 10 feet from the bulkhead, the front yard setback certainly would not be as great as 17 feet as it is right now, and this store, and this house would be every bit of two-and-a-half stories. Nonetheless, Mr. Reekley has chosen to build a small addition over the garage, maintain the existing number of bedrooms, and that little program meets his needs rather than tearing this house down and starting over. With respect to Mr. Rubin's comments concerning any pockets of view, for those of you who have been to the property, the house to the left has been demolished, and across the street there are two shade trees that are actually taller than the, than the house that's there that would have any view toward the canal. In light of that, we believe the setback variance, the combined side yard setback variance can be granted by way of maintaining light and open space by not letting it move on here, and also maintaining characteristics of the existing neighborhood, and we certainly don't think there's any, any detriment, any harmful, worse than detriment, because it's all planned and put in zoning work and seems to be bad for a professional engineer, did you determine that this garage can maintain the weight of the proposed addition?
It can, we had to excavate the, some.
I, I can't hear you, could you just speak into the mic a little?
We actually went and did some excavation at the corner of the garage to dig down to the foundation to ascertain its ability to support the additional weight.
And the overall height of the addition is actually lower than the ridge of the principal structure.
About a foot lower.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
I'm assuming this is less than 50% of the value of the house, this cost for FEMA requirements?
I can assure you that it is, it is not, to tell us what's certain applied with his instructions.
Well, let me, in, in that vein, how high, how many feet higher would the house have to be lifted to meet FEMA requirements? Can I ask Mr. Galantino even though he recused himself?
Have to be lifted, I believe, to 11 plus one, should be 12.
But where is it now? Where's the first floor?
Nine.
So three feet more, it would have to go up three feet more, okay.
I have a question for Roger, when a house is built on the vacant lot to the left of the property, what would be the minimum side yard setback? what would be the minimum side yard setback?
Side yard setback? Uh, this is, um, a- The lot is-
How wide?
Lot next door.
Yes. Oh, you want to know what the- what the setback for the lot next door would be?
Yeah.
It depends on the width of the lot.
Well, what would the minimum be?
It depends on the width of the lot. If it's a sixty-foot lot, it would be ten. If it's a fifty-foot lot, it would be eight.
Okay.
If it's under that, it would be five.
Okay.
And I think- I think it's a large lot, but I'm not sure.
Yeah. So at least fifty, okay.
Any other questions from the board? Say anyone here?
I have a- I have a question. There's a certain, um, lack of precision in some of these plans, other than the- the basic question that Clem brings up. You s- the site plan shows a three-foot projection of the, uh, the little deck off of this addition. Um, we have to be su- we have to be sure that you have a full ten feet from the outside of the bulkhead to the edge of this deck, or else a variance kicks in. When I put my scale on it, I get twelve and a half feet from the bulkhead to the house. That doesn't add up. So, we need to be sure that, no matter- no matter what size of that deck is, it's going to be ten feet back from that bulkhead.
That's fine. What we're going to do, what we'll do as a condition of approval, and- and in the vein of Jimmy to review those plans, Mr. Reekley has agreed to have the plans reviewed by a New Jersey architect and a surveyor to sign and certify when they're submitted for those. And to make sure that the calculations are accurate. I- I don't want to run afoul of anything that's going to have a cost.
Okay.
Can I ask Stan a question?
Just with what's all going on, and everybody sitting back on everything on this.
If we were to cut this title block off, and the homeowner signed it, we would have to accept it?
What do you say?
That- that, I would say yes to that answer. And, um, the fact that- the fact that he's testif- qualifies as an expert to testify doesn't mean that the board has to take his testimony as true. They can- like, if Clem was sitting up here and he didn't recuse himself, he could ask questions, why it's not accurate, et cetera. But to say he's not an expert to testify, I just think, you know, due respect, is wrong. I don't think it's legally going to be sound. I mean, if the board has problems with that, they can ask that. We could- our professionals can ask that, our planner can ask that, like Mr. Rubin's doing that. But it doesn't disqualify him from testifying before the board. That's my position. I don't disagree with Clem, but I think that we have a disagreement as to whether he can testify or not. I think he can.
And Mr. Rubin, we must put the option to an architect and a surveyor to verify the mention. If the surveyor doesn't, Mr. Janico's intention will be to review the plan and be submitted.
Well, well, I'm okay with that. I don't know where Mr. Gallantino will be for the submittal for building permits. But I'm okay with signing off for the planning board.
But the condition will be that it's at least ten feet.
At the ten feet?
The mention of the plans you guys are reviewing will be verified by surveyor.
Right. So, the deck will not be closer than ten feet to the bulkhead.
Right. But the second part of what he said was, he shifted from an architect to an architect or a licensed surveyor.
To confirm the mention?
Yeah, I understand.
Anything else on the board, Roger? Does anyone here from the public like to speak? Public portion disclosed. Any further discussion from the board? Stan, would you read this?
The app- the application is for, um, two, looks like two C variances. One from left side setback. Excuse me, ten feet's required, 6.03, uh, feet to the bedroom buildup over the garage is proposed. Combined side setbacks, twenty-two feet's required. Uh, 12.04 is requested. So, it would be a motion, the affirmative, for those two C variances, as well as any other conditions, which I'm going to let Mr. Rubin, um-
And the conditions are, I'm sorry. And the conditions are confirmation of ten feet from the bulkhead to the deck, and revised plans to be confirmed, signed by a licensed architect or a surveyor.
Hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Hear a second?
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the application. Uh, I think it's very de minimis. It's a very small improvement, and it'll keep the character of the house. There's no detriment to the neighborhood, awards of light and air. And, uh, as far as who draws the plans up, that's up to Mr. Gallantino when they get a permit.
Mike Richman?
I vote in favor of the application. I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood.
Commissioner Pauling?
I too. As Roger points out, um, uh, they- they could rebuild something with a larger, more full build-out. I, uh, I vote yes.
Mike Chris Golding?
I vote yes for the application.
Frank Palasato?
Uh, it's a modest addition, and, um, using the existing structure. I vote yes for the project.
David Carter?
I vote yes for the proposal.
Destana Hess?
I vote yes, as to each of the two requests for both the left side setback, as well as the side setback. Especially noting Mr. Rubin's .5. I appreciate the fact that they're retaining an old-type home. I think it's a nice plan.
Joe DeJolos?
I agree with some of the other, uh, both of my fellow board members. I see no detriment.
Craig Patterson?
Uh, I also vote yes for the aforementioned reasons. And I- I look at the new house on the right, and it's- it's huge, and this house will be- I'm glad this house is being remodeled and, uh, improved than keeping the old house, so I vote yes.
Motion passes.
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break.
I think it's extremely clear that you're not talking about everything. Yeah.
You totally got it.
Like, that's the one. I think it's necessary. I completely agree with everything you said.
I know. I'm almost ready to sit.
I'll tell him, maybe he can say it.
Other couple hours?
I was thinking another forty-five minutes.
That's in my mind. We were trying to figure the floor out. I said, I said, I said that. And, uh, I want to change. You forgot.
I forgot.
Whoops. Next case is Brian Miranda, 8505 Fremont Avenue, block 613.01, lot 34, in the S-40 district, to grant a C variance for front setback and possibly others. Taxes occurring and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? I do. The subject property is a one-and-a-half-story, single-family home on a corner lot of 4,040 square feet. Essentially fifty feet by eighty-one feet, but with a small radius carved out at the corner. It is proposed via the submitted plans by architect Mark Zawacki to enlarge the second floor mainly by an expanded master bedroom suite with bedroom, bathroom, closets, and a deck on Lancaster Avenue. The additional construction tops off at 21 feet, six inches, above the first floor, which is six and a half feet below ordinance maximums. Variance is required, our front setback for the house on Lancaster's twenty feet is required to enclosed addition versus 14.7 feet as proposed. And side setback of the proposed porch, eight feet is required versus five feet, ten inches, per the survey and site plan comments. This is a modest house requesting a modest improvement, and the result appears to be a house that remains consistent with the neighborhood pattern in terms of size, scale, and aesthetics. Second, site visits, of course, will determine impacts, if any. The area of the proposed second-floor porch presently is under roof, and the porch will open up vistas and entrance of light and air with respect to the house next door on Lancaster, to the right. Three, building coverage is not increased by this proposal. No new bedrooms are created, and landscape areas exceed the maximums by over 200 square feet. No conditions are suggested at this time.
Mr. Patterson, members of the board, members of the board, and also our representative Brian Miranda, who has been waiting patiently through all of this this evening. For this request, 8505 Fremont, corner of Fremont and Lancaster. Though on Lancaster, this, I- for whatever reason, it's a really nice little house, built and stood, well-maintained, and it's nice to see today. Lot 34, block 613.01, in the S-40 zone. And relatively straightforward request on his expansion of the bedroom upstairs to take back by a home. And they're expanding onto area, roof area that they have, that is there. Uh, there's no additional enforcement, either on setbacks or political space being affected. You guys have to do it twice. Let me just let Mark tell you what it is, and then we can talk about the variances. Go ahead, Mark. Need to be sworn again.
That's Mark.
Zawacki?
Yes, I do.
Mark, Roger went through these proposals pretty nicely.
Okay. Um, the first one is, we're extending the master bedroom suite three feet over, okay, to square this off, and then add this deck so that the master has a deck off the, uh, off the master suite, there's a balcony.
That's the area where the existing gable end goes up higher.
That's right, there's a gable end here, so this will open up views this way. You know, trying to keep the style of the house was the most difficult thing, because being a Cape, we really didn't want this to pop out and be an eyesore. So, we tried to blend in the architecture by tying this roof in, because right now, this roof is just a real shallow, shallow pitch on it. So, what we've done here is created closets and a bathroom suite.
And that results in setbacks because of existing-
That's correct.
Sideback is on Lancaster side, this existing-
That's correct.
So, we are maintaining the existing setback at 14.7 in Lancaster.
That's correct.
The side yard setback that's created, we have two sides.
That's correct. And also, this small blue area here, we're moving the wall over.
Now, the porch is actually- So, if anything varies in depth, any impact?
Correct.
Members of the board, I don't have any other-
Does anyone from the board have any questions? Is there anyone here, yes?
Yeah, we have no elevations on this.
Speak into the mic, please, Mike. Speak into the mic, please, Mike.
We have no elevations that I've found so far on this. I mean, other than the one.
Right. The twenty, twenty-one for six.
Lancaster avenue elevation, uh, you have a ridge at 21 feet six.
Right, got that.
I don't see first floor.
The first floor, of course, is below the flood elevation, so of course we're locked into that fifty percent rule.
Do we have to raise the house? Do we have to raise the house?
Not if we keep it under the fifty percent rule.
Okay.
And it's only a, it's a two hundred and forty square foot addition is what it is.
Should be able to.
Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, I close the public portion.
I'll make the motion. I second, is there any condition?
I have no conditions.
No conditions? Roll call.
I vote in favor of the application. I think this is a very modest request. I agree with Roger's comments on the impacts of the neighborhood. I don't think there'll be any impacts in the neighborhood, and I think it's going to be a nice addition, so.
I know this house well. I lived it almost across the street from it for forty-two years. I think this is a considerable improvement, and the benefits of it certainly outweigh any detriments. I vote yes.
I vote yes. I think it's a nice design, and it fits into the neighborhood.
Chris, is the applicant here?
Right here.
Oh, hey, Donna. It's a very modest application, and I agree with the board. I think the, the application was done properly, and I don't see any detriment. I approve.
I agree with Mr. Gallantino, yes.
As everyone else has stated, it's a modest addition, and I think it'll be an improvement. I vote yes.
Frank Palmasano?
It's a nice looking addition, and I vote yes also.
David Carter?
I agree with the application, and I think it's a tremendous asset.
I vote yes. It's a great design, and it'd be great for the neighborhood.
I've also lived near this house since it was constructed, and it's been a classic nice house that I would be sorry to see it go away, so, and I don't think this addition is going to really change the nature of the house, so I'm glad to see this addition, and I see no detriments, and I approve this application.
Hey, Brenda, do you want to bring this up?
No, let's, we have public participation first, and then we'll have other business, and we'll have you, and then we'll have Roger. So if there was anyone here that the public would like to say something? Pardon me? Yes?
Mark Schwartz. S W A R T Z. Nine South Rumson. Nine South Rumson, Margate, New Jer, Margate, New Jersey. I do. For me, Labor Day will be the twenty-ninth anniversary of being a homeowner in Margate. About a year and a half ago, we decided to sell our original home and buy what we believe will be our retirement home in the Parkway section. We hired what I believe is one of the most reputable and skilled architects in Donzaker. We hired the most respected public surveyor in Arthur Poncio, and an excellent local contractor that's done business in this community for decades in Jim Cristaldi. Our plans were reviewed, modifications were requested by our zoning officer. In fact, one modification was to move our home four inches, which we did. And our architect, we did the plans and complied with each and every request, and by my and my wife's specifications, we wanted no variances, we wanted to comply with the rules and regulations, which we believed we did. Shortly thereafter, a permit was issued, and we began building. As anyone who is underwent construction is aware, the building department monitors each and every step of the way to make sure that we're in compliance. This past Saturday, I received a stop work order due to the desire of the city to make retroactive changes to our rules. In fact, you will hear shortly, I believe, that this has been referred to as an interim reinterpretation. While the laws have not changed, and there has been a dozen or so years of consistently interpreting these rules, our city wants to have a new interpretation, go back retroactively, and impact two of the many homes that would be in violation of this new interim reinterpretation. Not all the homes over the last dozen or so years, just two that are substantially complete in construction. For our home, which was designed to have a generous deck, it would result in that being a one-foot deck, or patio and deck.
Excuse me, excuse me, just let me get it up for a moment.
Please.
This is not your forum. We are not here to decide whether your house is going to be continued construction, that's a construction decision. What we're discussing tonight is, are we going to change this rule going forward, what we propose to it? It's not our decision whether it's retroactive or not, so please have your say, but I would ask that you limit your comments to a few more minutes, because.
I'll be, I'll take two more minutes.
That's, that's okay, and I'm fine with that, and I'm, I'm just saying that we can't satisfy what you're looking for.
And I understand that.
That's fine.
But you're all involved in the city, you're all involved in building and regulations, and I would ask each of you, how would you feel if you relied on plans, you built, and then you were told retroactively that what you did was, was not acceptable?
I'm glad to hear you, and, and continue, I just wanted you to know that you can't get resolution from you, you're from this board, that's all.
And I understand that.
Fine, but please continue.
But Commissioner Toby is here, and certainly you're impactful in thinking about what is just for not only our home, but one other impacted party who, who is also here.
If I can interrupt for a second, I agree with you. I have a question for Mr. Patterson and Mr. Rubin. Who's, how did we selectively pick these two homes and, and stop the work? I mean, who, whose decision was that?
I don't know. I don't know.
Brenda, again, would that be a subject for discussion in front of this board? I don't know. I mean, I'm here tonight prepared to talk about asking this board to recommend to the commissioners moving forward to codify as a change in the zoning ordinance the way we calculate front setbacks.
Just as I agree with the man testifying here, I agree with you. I don't know the answers to those questions, but I don't think, it's not something that this board is here to consider, or can consider, so.
And while, and while, I agree with you, you're issuing, you're issuing variances, and there are permits being issued. What value do they have if sometime down the road you can turn around and say, just kidding, we are going to not honor what we've done?
I agree with you.
If I may interrupt for a second.
Take it to the proper place.
What, what the board has to decide tonight, we are, we are referred under municipal land use law, a change that we have to consider to how the calculation of front yard setback is determined. Our job under the municipal land use law isn't to decide who's violating what tonight, it's just to refer back to the commission. Do you want to say something? I see you waiting.
Well, I understand that, and I don't expect you to say, yes, we'll take the stop work order on, but I wanted everyone to hear how, in my opinion, how ridiculous this is. It's created a great hardship for me, my wife, and our family. It's already been quite expensive in legal fees, and it's interrupted our construction, so we've already had damages. And I know Commissioner Toby was going to be here, and it doesn't seem like anyone is willing to make a decision to lift the stop work orders for the homes that are impacted. And I just ask anyone here as residents, not necessarily as decision makers, how would each of you feel if this happened to any one of you?
Violated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation?
Can I just reserve the right to speak after Roger makes his presentation?
The portion is closed.
Got to talk now? I don't know.
It's late, I mean, then we have, we have other business, and we have two or three other business things, so say what you have to say now.
Okay. Okay, I'll cut to the chase. I think the idea of putting the, the idea of eliminating the high and low setbacks was essentially to eliminate aberrations that occur in the city sometimes, and as I recall, I'm the one that suggested it way back when, and that was because I was working on a couple of projects, that end of the town where you had one hundred and twenty-five foot lots, the front setbacks in some cases were like seventy, eighty feet on one property, so it would completely skew the, the average, because all of a sudden you're adding ten or fifteen feet to my project because of some lot, you know, two, two down, where the guy's got some little shack in the back that's going to come down in three years anyway. So I don't really like the idea of just kind of eliminating the whole concept of the high and low.
Isn't it only if there's less than three?
My suggestion was change the default numbers, and that would be, to me, make it five feet in S twenty-five zone, ten feet in all the other zones, and ten feet on all the east-west streets. And that's, that's my suggestion, as opposed to eliminating the high-low considerations.
Thank you.
No, it's not a good.
Make him happy. Speak up.
I'm not, yeah, I'm speaking as a citizen. I'm, yeah, I'm not.
What's your address?
I'm not going to, no, I'll speak as, as a lawyer who does work.
Well, doesn't he have to be sworn in if he's a citizen?
Yes, he does.
Yes, you do. You be sworn in.
I'm, I'm glad I practiced on this. Chris Ballinger. Two twenty-one North Vennum.
Speak into the microphone, please, sir.
Sure. I don't care how you do it, I don't care how you do it with respect to the change of the ordinance, and that doesn't affect me as long as I have an ordinance to follow, but take your time and do it. What you guys are going to be talking about tonight was done in three days. I mean, this issue just came up like last week, and Roger, to his credit, came up with a solution, which addresses the issue that has created this turmoil. I don't think that going forward, a standard should be created that addresses the issue that has created this turmoil. I think if you're going to change the front yard setback standard, give it some thought. Don't do it in a way that, that addresses the issue that, that is now created as a result of the Schwartz house or any other homes, because that may not be the best standard for the rest of the community. I mean, the, the averaging was a wholesale change when the, when the master plan was done twelve years ago with higher and lower, wholesale change, and it's worked pretty darn good, I think, until we have the one or two, it's worked pretty good, till we have these one or two aberrations. The five-foot default, like Pete said, is probably too tight, but you should be given options other than this reaction to this situation, which is now going to be part of the ordinance for how many more years? So if people, I mean, it's, it's worth more discussion than what we, what, what you've received or reviewed this evening. There, there can be better ways to consider, maybe at the end of the day, this is the best way to do it, but look at other options.
The, the problem with, the problem with that idea is other aberrations could come up tomorrow, and we're, we're already working with an interim reinterpretation, and.
Don't go, don't even, don't even want to go there.
Okay, but I'm going there, and that's.
That's going to be another hour.
That is, that's in effect, and all the commissioners want to do.
You don't, that can't be in effect.
Let me finish. All the commissioners want to, all the commissioners want to do is convert that to legal ordinance language, exactly what's already in effect as of last Thursday.
That's exactly, that's exactly.
And I know we're, we're discussing what I haven't even presented to the board yet, but.
I'm familiar with, that, that, that's my exact point. What you're discussing about putting into effect is as a result of a one or two houses. I don't think that should be the control that we have to work with going forward, because it may not be the right one.
But to do it correct.
Are we discussing?
We will be.
We will be discussing whether this is retroactive or not?
No.
No, no.
Oh, no, no.
I'm not even saying that.
No.
What I'm saying is what you're discussing is created as, as a result of something that ha, that's happened one or two times now, last week after twelve years.
I, I agree.
Is that what we're going to use going forward? Really? Because one house or two houses? Ordinance for, now for, for the, for the future.
But, but to do it properly, it has to be part of a master plan study that considers everything in context. I think it does.
You have this discussion, you have this discussion?
Well, I am, but I'm saying that we, I'm saying we can't afford to wait until we have a complete master plan study, that could take a year or two. We have to do something at this early stage.
You don't have to do something because of this situation. You can have this discussion tonight, and some board members might say, I'm not so sure, if we're going to change the front yard setback standard, let's look at a variety of ways to do it.
We're not changing anything. All is what you're doing is talking about clarifying what's existing in the code. We're not changing any zoning code. It already says that first, second floor balconies and everything have to meet the front yard setback. So all is we're talking about is how we determine that setback, and if you only have one front porch, that's your setback. If you have two, then there's no high and no low to throw out, that's your average setback. That's all we're going to talk about.
Understood, and but we're changing.
So we're not changing anything.
We're changing the way we've been doing it, and I'm saying if you're going to do that, I mean, look at some options.
But we're not.
I, I don't care how you do it.
We're just giving, we're just giving an interpret.
I, I don't care how you do it, but take the opportunity to explore some, some options that might be better.
Do you have any other options?
Call a lawyer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to just add, if nothing has changed, why do I have a temporary stop work order? I, I don't understand that. So explain to me if nothing has changed.
We can't, we can't, please. Go yell at Brenda and the commissioners. Anyone else like to speak? Somebody here from Quincy Avenue would like to speak? Thank you. Thank you. I realize we sympathize with you.
Chairman?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Gallantino.
The board doesn't realize that the two jobs that are affected where a stop work order was posted, and the two jobs are Mr. Wasserman's job and Mr. Schwartz's job, and they're the jobs that are in question. Clint just asked me, why are we talking about a stop work order? And if the board has any questions about why they were stopped, it's just a, there was a verbal notification by our solicitor for me to do so. A verbal notification by our city solicitor to, to stop the jobs.
Does everyone hear that? But again, that has nothing that we can, we can do about it, and we understand why you did it. All right, now we're moving on to other business. Brenda?
Last year, I took a course, Rutgers offered a, an environmental course, and I learned a lot, learned a lot about sea level rise, climate change, and innovative ways we can build and help lessen flooding in our streets. So part of my project is helping our green team organize this stormwater management workshop. It's going to be held Thursday, July seventeenth, from one to three-thirty at the Margate Performing Arts Center, and we're doing it in conjunction with Brigantine Atlantic City, Vatner, and Longport. I'm really excited about it. We've got three really super dynamic speakers. Ken Miller from Rutgers, he went to MIT. He's a climate sea level expert. The other gentleman, Chris Abrupta, also with Rutgers. He's going to speak to us about implementing resilient activities. And then Lisa Arum Miller, she's with the Jean-Cousteau Institute. She, she helped put together the flood mapper, the website where you can go, you know, put in if the sea level rises three feet, you know, what would be underwater, what wouldn't. And she's gonna be there talking to us. So I think as a planning board, it would be beneficial, I'm hoping everybody will come. I hope everybody that's involved in planning can attend. Engineers, planning, Roger, planning board, Jim, Gallantino, green teams, anybody that has, can influence or make planning decisions. I think there's a lot to be learned. I didn't know that there was permeable pavement out there. You know, things like that, that we can do that will help lessen fighting. So please try to come. And if you can come, RSVP to Johanna. Thank you.
I, I think, I would recommend that the board do attend, because with all the studies and whatever we're gonna be doing over the next year, I think this would give us a better Next. Roger, would you like to discuss anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, earlier today, emailed to all the board members, and I just handed out a copy of the email, a memo, and I'm gonna read through it. And it's gonna take about five minutes, and we'll get to the end, and I'm gonna ask you to make a recommendation, if you wish to, to the commissioners. The mayor and commissioners have requested that the planning board consider an ordinance change regarding how front setbacks are calculated for residential structures. The reason for a change is because the existing requirement, as interpreted by me since about 2004, created two new porches that are under construction, which project toward the street in a way that appears out of character with the streets they are on. Here is the background. The land use ordinance at 175-30C5 says balconies, single-story porches, second-story porches, and decks of any kind must meet the principal building setback standards. But what are those standards? The only place in the ordinance that describes setback standards for residential structures is in Schedule B-1, which I attached, by the way, and I put some yellow color on it. Schedule B-1, which says that the minimum front yard is prevailing setback within 200 feet in the same block. It goes on to say eliminate the high and low values before the average is calculated. And then it says regardless of the average, the minimum setback of at least five feet shall be provided. And this next paragraph in parentheses kind of responds to what Mr. Weiss said. In previous zoning ordinances, there was no averaging as to front setback, merely an absolute number, which was five, 10, or 15 feet, depending on the year and the zone. It was the intention of the board in the 2004 master plan to create a method that reflected what was already there on the block, but to eliminate aberrations that would skew the results, thus taking out the high and the low before doing the math. Many houses at Margate have front porches, and they are considered desirable in many ways for the residents and the streetscape. From the beginning in 2004, I interpreted the ordinance to logically mean that you calculate a separate front setback for the house wall, house walls, and a separate front setback for front porches. I have been consistent on this, and the board is aware of the distinction, having heard cases for variances for either front of house or front porch. Recently, the dropping of the high and the low, where there were only one or two porches within 200 feet, and then the reversion to the five-foot minimum, has created a couple of porches, as I said, that project toward the street in a way that has been upsetting to neighbors, because the porches project in front of actual house walls and block views, et cetera. The projection problem is magnified by the higher elevation of the house and porch due to new FEMA house elevations. Because of these two cases, I revised my interpretation effective last Thursday, moving forward, based on the language in the master plan, to not eliminate the high and the low when there are less than two porches, or less than two houses within 200 feet. So for example, actually, that should have read it, less than three porches or less than three houses, I apologize. Less than three. So for example, if there is only one porch within 200 feet and it is setback nine feet, a new house would have to position the porch front at a nine-foot setback rather than five feet as previously interpreted. You wouldn't throw out the high and the low and revert to five. A zoning officer can interpret a zoning ordinance, and in fact is responsible to do so whenever necessary. I have begun to communicate this new interpretation to surveyors, architects, and others, including the city commissioners, last week. They in turn have asked that the planning board recommend to them immediately a change in the actual ordinance language, feeling that is a better way to move forward. The changes would be as follows. That paragraph I cited above, 175-30C5, would now say balcony, single-story porches, second-story porches, and decks of any kind must meet the principal building setback standards as set forth in Schedule B-1 under minimum front yard. And then Schedule B-1 would be revised under minimum front yard to say two separate things. For front wall of house, the prevailing setback of front walls of houses within 200 feet in the same block is how you calculate the front setback. You eliminate the high and the low values before the average is calculated unless there are fewer than three houses. Regardless of the average, the minimum setback of at least five feet shall be provided. For E, for the front of porch, prevailing setback of front walls of porches within 200 feet in the same block, eliminate, eliminate the high and low values before the average is calculated unless there are fewer than three porches. Regardless of the average, minimum setback of five feet shall be provided. I'm attaching a copy of B-1. If the planning board agrees, the commissioners would like a resolution or a letter of recommendation so they can introduce it next Thursday. This would, this would be a quick and, I think, fairly intelligent and proper way to satisfy the intention of the master plan in averaging, and it would have not, it would have created less of a problem with those two other houses. But we're not talking about those two houses. We're talking about in the future. We're not talking about changing anything that has already received a zoning approval or a building permit, just changing the ordinance pending a master plan change in the next six, 12, or 18 months, so that there will not be more aberrations and more distress in more neighborhoods.
I have two questions. I have two questions.
Yeah.
If there's no porches, does it default to five feet?
No. If there's no porches, it defaults to the average of houses.
Okay. And the second question is, if a porch is, if the neighboring houses is within the house setback or equal to the house setback, is that counted?
It's counted if it's equal to, but not behind it.
Okay.
Roger, you forgot to talk about the one reason why we needed to do this, and that was primarily if we allowed it to go with the setback to the home, then we would have all these homes coming forward with a solid wall instead of a porch.
Yeah. What Jimmy is alluding to is that there was, in recent discussions, one interpretation that, well, let's just count the closest thing to the street. Like if you have 10 houses, and this house, the porch is closest, that house, the wall is closest, this house, the porch is closest, you count the closest thing and just forget the distinction. The problem with that is that when you're really on your average block overwhelmingly, the porches are several feet out from the houses. What doing that would have done would have been to allow all house walls to move out to where the porches are. I, I live on a block where the, the porches are all about, I don't know, 12 feet back. The houses are all close to 20 feet back, my entire block. If we, if we just counted whatever is closest to the street, then there would be more mass on the street, and I don't think we want to do that. I think that's why I came up with that interpretation 10 years ago, to, because it made incredibly good sense, and I think it was, it was a good interpretation, but the aberrations have proven that we need to tweak it pending a master plan revision.
Are we gonna hold that if we do it like we did on Thurlo tonight? Are we gonna hold that or do what we did tonight on Thurlo? Just let a variance go through to move it on the corner setback right here on Thurlo that we just did? We just, Amherst and Thurlo tonight, we just approved it. So what's, what's the sense of us making any rules if we're just gonna say, oh, that's okay, let it go?
That's, that's the whole purpose of the board, Mike.
I understand that. But I mean, if we're gonna set a rule, I think we ought to be a little bit more strict with the rule.
Well, you got beat.
That applies to any rule.
I understand that.
I think we need guidelines. So I wanna make sure I understand that we are, this is from this point forward, and this is gonna be recommended to us at our July 3 meeting, the, the next meeting. And then if we approve that, the two homes that have stop orders right now, then I, if my understanding is, I know, I'm wearing my commissioner hat right now, then I think that those two homes need to come before us at a public meeting and get a variance to be able to continue to build? Is that?
That we, I, I don't think we should or could talk about the legal remedies that those two homeowners have, that we're talking about moving forward.
If we can't talk about that, then how can I, you know, I'm not gonna recommend that premium.
Because that could lead to going back to 2004 for everybody, including me, who had two, 200-yard footprints or 200 measurements having to come back before the board. So the issue with these two gentlemen needs to be determined with the city attorney or the city commissioner or whatever. All we're recommending is what's going forward. We're not addressing whether these two people can continue building or not. That's not our decision.
I, I don't get it.
We're saying if it's less than three-
But you're screwing this guy.
We're not screwing the guy.
Well, well, somebody's screwing him.
Absolutely.
If, if we, if we decide to keep it, we say no, we don't wanna change it, we wanna keep it the way it was, then what happens?
Well, there's already been a work order, work stoppage done. That screwed the guy, and that's gotta be taken away. We can't take it away. We can't tell Jimmy to get rid of that work order.
So the way it was written, stop the construction?
I don't think so.
The way it was interpreted.
The way it was interpreted before, it wouldn't stop construction. And we're saying to prevent this, where somebody gets hit after the fact, to stop this. I mean, both of those porches stick way out. If I was a neighbor, I may have a problem with it. But I also have a problem with it being approved and then saying, no, you can't do it.
Rich, I have a question for Roger. I follow what you're doing, okay? Everything looks adequate here, but you're keeping that five-foot setback as a default when in actuality, it either should be done by zone, by S-2540, or, I mean, hypothetically, now I'm gonna be, Mike, breaking your floor pool, you say you need 10 feet, because if a kid falls over, he might fall in the pool and drown. So now if you only make it five feet and the kid falls off the deck, he could fall in the street and he could buy a car. So maybe we should make it 10 feet. So my whole point is that maybe our recommendation shouldn't be hard and fast on the five feet, but maybe it should be determined by, because every zone in Margate is different. So if you go down to a S-25 zone, five feet is more than adequate. If you go to some of these S-60s or S-40s like you and Ryan, 10 feet is very adequate. You know what I'm saying?
The problem is, Tom-
Set for a default.
Within S-25, you have all sorts of variations in setbacks, in setback patterns. You have streets like South Argyle and Barclay, not Beach Block, you know, where they're, the average is three feet. You have, and, and to create a 10-foot, a 10-foot default on those streets would be a burden. You have other S-25 streets where the, where the average setbacks are 10 or 15 feet. There's no, there's no consistency whatsoever between front setbacks and zones.
We're only talking about areas that have no three-foot setback, that there is no setback.
Well, there are S-25s with three-foot averages, and there's S-25s with 10 and 12-foot averages. I, I, I don't know, I think-
But is that five, I'm saying for the front porch, not for the house building.
I don't know.
So in other words?
I haven't really, I haven't really thought about it. I think, I think that requires, I think that requires studying as part of the master plan. I wish that we were in the middle of the master plan right now. I don't think that's as dangerous as the throwing away the high and the low.
You shouldn't throw away the high and the low if there's no high and low to throw away. I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I think the five-foot is not as-
But five-foot for a house default is fine. Five-foot for a porch default may not be.
You need empirical studies. I don't know. I honestly don't know.
I don't.
Roger, one, one question for you, and I can see the board's losing its attention. Where are we gonna go with this? Do we need to take a vote? Do we need to take a vote now to determine if we're gonna send a letter to the commissioners? Or do we table this and do a more comprehensive study and take a vote on that? There's two votes. Send a letter or a study?
My, my recommendation is to do something tonight, if at all possible, if you wanna do it, if you believe in it, and if you think it's the right thing to do, so that there is, there is greater strength moving forward than just an interim interpretation-
I agree with Bill.
-to, to preclude problems from occurring again that will be distressful. And I, and I, and I think it'll probably, this can work on a, on a pretty good basis for a while, until we have the master plan. That's my recommendation. The board may agree or disagree with that.
Richard, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna go to-
The reason, excuse me, the reason- Turn that mic off. To address Tom's, or Jim's question and what Chris said before, this will be discussed along with pool setbacks and whatever in the master plan. It's not gonna wait for the seven years to be up. It's gonna be done apparently this year. This is a measure that would prevent what happened to these two people. Again, neighbors are up in arms because it appears these giant porches came out of nowhere through no fault of these people. It was approved. Everything was done right. It was approved. They didn't need any variances according to that interpretation. We're saying from now until when the new master plan is done, they would need planning board approval to do what they did. And they would know well before they did any construction what they could and couldn't do. So I think it's a duty of the board to try to prevent this problem until the new master plan is done, to try to prevent this problem from happening. And again, it has no bearing on whether the stop orders are raised or not, or, or lifted. I fully sympathize with them. I would be screaming my head off outside with them. I would be here screaming. I would be screaming anywhere that people would listen to me. But we can't do anything about that. But what we can do is prevent this problem that has the neighbors in an uproar. We can prevent that from happening in the future, and then discuss all these additional ideas that do take more time for the master plan. So my recommendation would be that we do vote on this tonight. Yes?
What triggered the solicitor to order Jim to issue stop orders?
I, I'm not sure. What I think it was, was neighbors' complaints. And again, this is purely hearsay, but I understand there's a group on Rumsen Avenue that are getting a lawyer to try to stop this, of neighbors against this project. It's my guess that this is what triggered it.
Does the solicitor have that authority to just arbitrarily?
I don't know. I don't know. Clem, this again is not something that we, we can sit here and determine, so that's not relevant for the-
Mr. Chairman, board, I, as a commissioner, I will do everything in my power to get that work order, lift, stop-work order lifted. I'm concerned on so many levels about this problem. I'm concerned about how defendable the city is in the event of litigation.
This again has nothing-
I know, I know, I know, but I'm just, I know.
It's 11 o'clock. We have to stop in five minutes, Brenda.
And the architect and builder designed it, you know, according to what our code was at the time, and I just, I give you-
Brenda, I have to stop you. Brenda, you're out of order.
I'll do what I can. Thank you.
We have to make a decision here whether we're gonna vote.
Mister Ball-
Roger, before I-
Roger, before I, there's two things in your letter I don't, both of them have to do with Schedule B1. The average is calculated unless there are fewer than three houses. What happens if there are less than three houses? Does it go to the default?
Then they're not thrown out. Then the high and low is not thrown out.
Yeah, so it's three and that's a setback.
Can you continue that sentence somehow or never to make that a little clearer because it's not clear to me? Those two sentences.
Well, you have to look at the structure.
Says unless there are fewer than three houses, maybe comma, in which case?
It says we will not eliminate the high and low values when there are fewer than three porches. That's very clear. We will not eliminate the high and low if there's fewer than three porches.
So we will use the three porches? Is that what it implies?
Yes. That's what it says.
Should say if there's only two, have a new average, it's only one, that's.
Your period is over.
I agree with what John Rogers said, and I'd like to make the motion that we make a recommendation as Roger. We're going to.
Do that. We have to ask if there's any other discussion by the board. I would like you to do that. So there's not. So now, please make that motion.
I agree. You put a second.
I second the motion. I'd like a roll call vote.
Just a yes vote.
Roll call. Yes.
The vote is to make a recommendation to the city council in the format as placed in the memorandum of Mr. Rubin as to how to interpret it at this point in time. It doesn't mean it's now an ordinance. It doesn't mean it is the law. It just means that the commission's going to get it because of their referral to us. We have to make a finding under the municipal land use law and send it back to them either in the form they sent it or we can make changes to it. So I think the motion is to do it as is at this point in time.
Yes.
They stand? Stand. There's also the opportunity for them to go to the, it doesn't work. Go to the commission.
They have the opportunity, when it goes to the commission, to voice their opinion of the ordinance at that time.
Yeah, Jim, you were correct. I'm sorry, I didn't, I left that out. Anyone can go to the commission in the public and talk about that. It's just like any other commission meeting, will be put on the agenda and there'll be notice posted, I believe. And they'll vote on that or not, and there's a public portion.
Tom Collins?
Yes.
I was asking.
I can't say that I have fully digested this, but I have enough confidence in Roger that I will vote yes.
Mike Fritschman?
I can't, it's too much for me. I can't, you know, I'm, no. No.
Are you abstaining or no?
No.
Jim Gallantino?
I vote yes because we need to move forward.
Commissioner Talby?
I'm abstaining.
Mike Chris Talby?
I'm right next to Clem. I'm not taking it in real well right now, but I think going forward is the right thing to do. But I think we better be a little bit more.
Greg Palaseno?
Yes. Yeah, I vote yes, along with Roger.
David Carter?
I vote yes.
Joe DiGrola?
Yes.
Rich Patterson?
Yes.
Stanley, would.
If Patterson, eight to one.
Could you do the communication really fast to Abbott and.
I think it was seven to one, to one abstention for Commissioner Talby, just for the record.
No, I got eight to two. Oh, I'm sorry. Eight to one to one. I have.
Pardon me? I thought I had, I had nine total members voting.
One no, one abstention.
And then seven, because there's nine members.
Eight.
Only nine votes. Only nine votes, so.
No.
He was the alternate.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
I wrote down the names as they voted.
Ten voted, but who's the alternate then?
That would be Joe DiGrola.
Joe. Okay, okay, Joe.
And he said yes.
We heard you, Joe.
Thank you.
And yeah, Stanley.
Okay. Eight yeses, one no, one abstention.
And Stanley, in order to get this on the agenda for Thursday, if you can communicate quickly to Mr. Abbott and.
I already prepared a form letter. I'm going to transmit it tomorrow.
All right, great. Thanks a lot.
With the changes.
Good.
Any other business? No other business. I hear a motion to adjourn. Clem seconded it. To adjourn. Excuse me. Please stand for the flag salute.
Attention salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The hell's with you, Jim?
You ready for the roll call or are you reading the sunshine?
The roll call goes first, doesn't it?
Commissioner Talby?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two
Your motion to approve the minutes of April 24, 2014.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. To your motion for the approval of resolutions and decisions amended number 13, 2014, Robert Nustader, number 22, 2014, Jason Newman, number 23, 2014, Ed Wahlberg, number 24, 2014, Cassandra Banco, number 25, 2014, Stephen Baglevo, number 25, 2014, Stephen Brown.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes one, nothing.
You have to do an amended resolution, did you do that?
Yeah, amended.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Reg. I think the synographer has a question. Go ahead.
Nobody opposed.
You said one.
No, only one person answered in the positive and nobody answered in the negative. Mainly in General Contracting and Restoration Inc., 9 South Granville Avenue, Block 108.02, Lot 19, in the CBD district to grant a site plan approval for land area under 10,000 feet and C variance for parking, size of storage sheds, and possibly others, and D variance for office use. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin? Right, because it's a D variance, Mr. Gallantino, Mr. Collins, and you're here. Brenda won't be accusing themselves.
Roger Rubin?